And the meeting is called to order. Before we get started with the actual work of the town, I would like to call Karen Assley and Kim Monroe to the stage. Hearing no objections. Hearing no objections. So I'd like to invite Karen, our town manager, and Kim, our treasurer, to the stage. Thank you for all the work you do. And if we could also, as people are getting organized, finding a place to sit, not making a lot of noise, please. Because we do have some sound issues. Starting with Kim, would each one of you be willing to introduce yourself to the voters of Putney? Kim, do you have a mic? If you could just introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is Kim Monroe. I used to be a Putney resident for many years. I'm currently in Newfane, but I'm coming back to Putney very soon. I'm newly your treasurer and I'm really enjoying the job. Thank you for the opportunity.
Before Karen speaks, in the back, those of you who are in the back, if you could please keep your voices down. Hello? Vocal people of Putney, if you could please keep your voices down in the back. I may need somebody to go back there with a paddle. Karen.
Morning, folks. I'm Karen Assley, I'm the town manager, voting administrator, finance director, and delinquent tax collector.
Greetings, all. Can you hear?
No.
People in the back, if you would please stop talking so that we can hear what's happening in town meeting.
Can you hear now? Okay, I guess you have to really get down here. I'm Peg Alden and I'm one of your select board members.
All right, is this one on? Oh, yeah, definitely on. Okay. I am Eileen Chute and I am the chair of the select board at the moment.
Hi, I'm Nate Snell, a member of the select board.
My name's Eric McGowan and I'm a select board member.
My name's Charlie Robichek. I'm a clerk as well as a select board member.
Hi, I'm Rachel Ryan. I'm the assistant treasurer and communications liaison.
Thank you, select board and employees of the town of Putney. So as you can tell, we're still working out some of the sound issues. We will be using the microphones very personally, personally, which means select board members, when it's time to talk, if you're able to get down and dirty perhaps with these microphones, I think the voters will have a better chance of hearing you. We have luckily somebody who will act as a runner for today's meeting, and that's Alexis Pichek. And so when we get to the articles, if you have a question, and I sure hope you do have questions, if you have something you wish to say, either for or against an article, please wait for the runner to bring you the mic. And we are also setting up a microphone so that people can come forward. So Steve is going to take care of that. But before we get into the business of deliberation, I do have a list of people who would like to speak to the voters ahead of time. Mike Pichek, are you in the audience? And Mike Pichek, Vermont State Treasurer, perhaps, Mike, would you be willing to come to use this mic? And I'm right that you're not a Putney resident, is that correct? This is a Brattleboro person, Putney. So hearing no objections, I invite Mike Pichek to take the mic.
I don't think that should work. We were testing it. Yeah. See? Yeah. Then you go, yep, now just speak right into it. You have to get very close to these devices. Yeah.
Can anybody hear this?
Here, Mike, use your mic.
Why, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here at your town meeting. I'm Mike Pichek. I'm the state treasurer here in Vermont. I grew up in Brattleboro. I've been working in state government now for about a past decade or so. As a state treasurer, we've been very focused on trying to build more affordable housing in Vermont and supporting the growth of more housing. We have a low-interest loan program that we established specifically for housing and we were excited to be able to support the Affordable Housing Project here in Putney this year, which I understand is moving along well. But we're also supporting dozens and dozens of other programs throughout Vermont. We're also focused on retirement security. Senator Jeanette White and I worked very hard to get the Vermont State pensions and the teacher pensions in a spot that are much more sustainable. And I appreciate Jeanette. I know she was here this morning. There she is. And we're past another program called Vermont Saves, which we're operationalizing right now to provide retirement for businesses and individuals that don't have retirement through their employer that we're very excited about. But I'm most excited to talk about our unclaimed property list that I brought with us, which is for the town of Putney. So over 5,000 pieces of unclaimed property, estimated over a million dollars, I would say. So come and see me if you want to check the list. Just this morning, when I was meeting with my dad, I said, boy, that piece of property is pretty large. You know who this happens to be? And he said, yes, I've been doing his taxes for 40 years. So it was $38,000 that we were able to return to this individual in their 90s just this morning. So not everyone has that much. But come and check it out and we'll run through the list. Thank you so much for having me. Yeah.
Thank you very much. The next person who we had hoped might be able to speak to us this morning is our principal, John Sessions. Unfortunately, he's not able to join us because, for health reasons. However, I do have representatives from the Wyndham Southeast District School Board. Laura, would you be willing just to give some discussion about what's happening in the school?
I do not represent the school board. I represent the Independent Budget Review Committee, the IBRC. It's... Sure, sorry. I'm Laura Chapman. Do you want to... Hi. My name is Ruby McAdoo. I'm going to set myself down because I'm taller than Meg. And I am actually first going to read you a statement from John Sessions, who's the principal of Putney Central School. I was just down the hall and want to thank the PTO for providing childcare. I was just checking in to make sure they're okay because that's normally something John would do. And he is home ill, and so he can't be here. He wanted to share, "Dear Putney community, I'm deeply sorry that I'm unable to be with you today at town meeting. The values exemplified here at town meeting are those that lie at the very core of why I love the Vermont small-town experience and what we strive to bring to our Putney Central School community every day. Thank you to the many hands that it took to pull off today, including PCS staff members David Diaz and Tony Coven from our facilities department, and Steve Head and Ariane Lavoy from the kitchen." Thank you also to the many PTO volunteers who volunteered to run a bake sale on our behalf today. There are many exciting things happening here every day at Putney Central. I would not be more, I could not be more proud of our community of students and staff and their endless dedication to learning and growth that is grounded in curiosity, care, and challenge. I feel grateful to work in a community that knows, cares for, and values every single student who walks through the door in the morning, which is a testament to longstanding traditions and values here at PCS. Our work as educators is always reflecting on refining what we do in the moment while planning for the future. Much of our forward thinking today is grounded around the concept of community schools, schools not only nested within a supportive community, but ones that really take an open community approach to raising youth. It is my belief that PCS and the town of Putney are uniquely positioned to really exemplify what a community school can be. While there is more to come down the line, please know that we not only welcome, but would greatly appreciate your involvement in our school community. There is information at the back table regarding our Leadership Council. It's right by the entrance door, which is a blended group of staff, parents, and community members that meets monthly, whose role is to ensure that community values are embedded in school decision-making and to support school initiatives in the community. In addition, this year, we started offering PCS community workshops, which is a chance for any member of our community to lead a workshop of any kind for students, staff, parents, and other community members. I, of course, would welcome the chance to connect with you if there are other ways you would be interested in being involved. Again, my apologies for not being present today. Please never hesitate to reach out to me at any time. And if you need John's contact information, I'm happy to provide it to you. Are we, is this just a school thing? So now Laura Chapman is going to come up. I am an elected representative to the school board and Laura is here from the Independent Budget Review Committee. Hi again. The Independent Budget Review Committee is a standing committee with representatives from each Wyndham Southeast School District, the WSESD town. Our purpose is to review the district's budget and write a report for district voters to provide information and independent analysis of the proposed fiscal year. The budget encompasses the programs and services of the WSESD's public schools in Dummerston, Guilford, Putney, and Brattleboro, including Brattleboro Area Middle School, Brattleboro Union High School, and the Wyndham Regional Career Center. The WSESD School Board has approved a $65,846,891 budget for FY 2025, fiscal year 2025, a 3% increase over the current budget, reflecting the end of pandemic-era federal funding, changes to the common level of appraisal, also known as the CLA, a new education tax formula, and inflationary pressures, including a 16% increase in healthcare costs. The IBRC has found the budget expenses to be responsive to the needs of our students and does not view them as including unnecessary expenses or those that take undue advantage of funding formula changes. However, the committee is concerned about the state's projected statewide education property tax increases this year. We encourage the Vermont legislator to collaborate with school districts to lessen this impact. At present, the legislator has not determined critical factors that inform the tax rate. Until a finalized tax rate is set, the IBRC cannot issue a formal recommendation on this budget. The IBRC expects more information to be available before the March 19th annual meeting and plans to issue a final report before then. You can find our current prepared report for the fiscal year 2025 budget, as approved by the WSESD Board, on the WSESD website and at the back of the room on the table Ruby was referring to. Serving on the IBRC is a great way to connect with the budgeting process more deeply and support your community in the democratic process of deciding on local budgets. The IBRC meets according to the WSESD budget timeline beginning in November and commits several hours through the budget season to meeting, writing, and reviewing content. It winds up in February. I will not be seeking reappointment for next year, so we will need another Putney resident to serve. If any of you want to serve the community in this way, please contact me or Ruby for further information and we'll connect you. The budget will be voted on from the floor of the WSESD annual meeting, which will take place on March 19th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the BUHS gymnasium. And I just want to say on a personal note, there's usually abysmal turnout from Putney, so it would be lovely if a few of us showed up. There will be, there will be an information session at the next school board meeting at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 12th, in the WRCC Q-SIC conference room or via Zoom. The agenda and link can be found posted under the WSESD Board section on the WSESU website. And if you have any trouble finding that, feel free to reach out. Okay, last time. Hi, I'm Ruby McAdoo and I'm one, oop, I'm breaking things. I'm one of two elected school board representatives. Ann Beekman couldn't be here today and she wanted me to let you know that she's sorry she's unable to be here. She really loves this particular event. And just as a reminder, the Putney School District merged with Dummerston, Brattleboro, and Guilford in 2018. And that was the first year we stopped talking about our school budgets in this space. And as Laura stated, we now vote on the school budget in the WSESD, which is the Wyndham Southeast School District Annual Meeting, which takes place in person. And the budget is now $65 million for the district. And PCS is one of 10 schools. Each school has a subsection in the budget. To reiterate, this year, the WSESD annual meeting will take place at 7:00 at BUHS, Brattleboro Union High School, on Tuesday, March 19th. In order to vote, you must be there. There's no proxy voting. And it is a $65 million budget that we're voting on. In 2023, last year, only 13 people attended from Putney. And it would be lovely to see more faces and have more participation to come and vote. There are printed budgets in the back, as Laura said, and also, we did print the Independent Budget Review Committee's preliminary report because I find that to be very, very helpful in understanding the budget in kind of layperson's terms. And again, Laura or I, and also John, when you see him, would be happy to answer questions related to the budget documents. Beyond the budget, I'll briefly go through a few things. The last year has been very busy and some of the work of the WSESD Board has been in the local media. But some's happened quietly and you'd have to really be paying attention to see it. To highlight some of the work of the WSESD Board, the Brattleboro Union High School has been without a permanent principal for almost two years. Hannah Parker was recently hired as the principal of BUHS, which we're very excited about. The Board is putting forward the proposed budget that was just talked about by Laura and that reflects a fiscally responsible 3% budget increase, which is in keeping with what we have increased in the past as well. The Board voted to endorse a Senate bill banning the sale of flavored cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and e-liquids in the state of Vermont. The WSESD Board released a statement on the sexual abuse investigation that has been ongoing, indicating that we do not expect to make any further comment on the investigation. This statement was not meant to indicate that the Board is done focusing on safety of our schools, but we do acknowledge that the Board continues to hear public comment of disappointment. The WSESD Board and administration drafted a collaborative statement to offer our support to those administrators and teaching staff who choose to discuss Palestine and Israel or any other conflicts with students in age-appropriate ways. The Board began a cycle of rotating meeting locations amongst schools in the district. We have had some technical glitches and weather has thrown us off a bit, but we do have an intention of trying to hold our meetings in schools throughout the district. The school board meeting in Putney will be later in the spring, maybe into the early summer. School leadership councils are advisory subcommittees of the WSESD Board and the Board continues to find ways to improve communications with leadership councils and facilitate input from them. That is really a good place to have a community voice, whether you have a student or anyone in your family in the school system or not. The Board voted to approve a student-driven rebranding process at the high school to settle on an updated name and mascot, and the new team name is the Bears. So those are just some of the most substantial happenings, but there's a lot more that we have been doing and what we do. It's a bit harder now with the merged district to feel connected, but it's my hope that more Putney residents stay involved by serving on the Leadership Council, on the Independent Budget Review Committee. There are other committees that are subcommittees of the Board that are really good ways to start to understand the massive merged district. You don't need to have a child, as I said, to actively be involved in anything related to the school district. All community members in the district are readily welcome and involved because we all, we all pay for our school taxes. Another way to stay informed is by following along with WSESD Board meetings, all of which are recorded and posted by BCTV. I would personally recommend watching them on 1.5 speed because they're extremely long. I will be, I'll be here all day and I'm happy to talk about matters of the school board. And please mark your calendars and come to vote at BUHS on March 19th. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, our representatives from the school board. Next up, we have elected representatives. Mike Murwicky, would you like to come to the stage and speak to the voters of Putney?
Good morning. It's a delight to be back home, even though we're only in Montpelier for five months a year this time of year. It's great to come home and see familiar faces. Now, you don't have to go far these days to hear bad news, but that's not why I'm here, because we've got good news to share. I'm going to start with the economy. The Vermont economy is doing well. The United States economy is the envy of the world right now. We are doing way better than any economy, and I know we've got troubles. Food prices are still high, interest rates are still high, but Vermont's unemployment rate is one of the lowest in the nation. And that exacerbates the problem we have with workforce, but we are working on that. Overall, we've got a lot to be grateful for with our economy. One of the other things I want to share about good news is we are not Texas. And I say that because last year, we passed some reproductive rights in law and put it in the Constitution. And if a woman in Vermont has the kind of complicated pregnancy that a woman in Texas did, she will not have to leave Vermont the way she would if she were in Texas. And I say that because there are people in this country, there are people in this state, and there are people in this town who want to take those rights away, and we are not going to let that happen. Now, we're working to pass and maintain a fiscally responsible, balanced state budget that reflects our values and supports Vermonters in all 14 counties. We're tackling the complex and interconnected challenges of housing and workforce. We're enacting forward-looking inclusive strategies to combat climate change and transition to a sustainable way of life as we implement a plan to achieve emissions reductions required as outlined in the Global Warming Solutions Act, which we passed over the governor's veto. Right now, we're working on the renewable energy standards, renewing the renewable energy standards, so we get more and more of our energy from renewable ways, especially hydro, hydro New York, hydro Quebec. When we pass this bill, and I hope the governor's on board with this one, it'll have the effect of taking 160,000 cars off the road. And this is vital because 40% of Vermont's carbon footprint is transportation. Now, closer to home, I'm working with other legislators to try and get some help for our orchards. The district I represent is Putney and Dummerston. There's four orchards in there. And as you may remember, last May, there was a horrible freeze where our orchards lost 90% of their crop. So I see Simone Renaud here from Scott Farm. We had Simone and Casey Darrell from Green Mountain Orchards to testify last week on behalf of this bill. And I'm hoping we can get some help for them to help them get to next year and hopefully, there's not another incident like we had last year. One of the other things we're working on is addressing protecting our pollinators. To that end, we know our pollinators are under stress. And what we're trying to do now is follow the lead New York State and our neighbors to the north, Quebec have done, in banning neonicotinoids in seed corn. It's the most prevalent use and what happens is the corn grows with that chemical within it, so when it blossoms, the bees come on it and it only takes a little bit of that to kill the bees. It's affecting our pollinators and they're under stress, so this is something we're going to have to take a look at and hopefully, we can follow our neighbors in Quebec and New York and change the availability of seeds without neonicotinoids. Now, one of the things I wanted to share is, and I'm glad Ruby could share about what's happening in the school here. If you haven't been in the school, if you haven't been a part of any of the committees, I really encourage you to do so. We have the Leadership Council that meets once a month on, I forget if it's the first Thursday, Carolyn Oliver, second Thursday. You can, it happens here in the library, it happens on Zoom. It's a great way and it's an easy way to get a sense of what's happening here in this school. And it's alive. This school is alive. We can be proud of what's happening and the more we get involved, the better it gets too. So I suggest we take a look at that. Another thing I want to take, raise up as a concern is life is getting more complicated, especially for our municipal government. Karen is being asked to do more and more and a lot of times, the best she can do is reach out to our Regional Planning Commission. And I think we're starting conversations on what we can do. Now, we don't have county government in Vermont and that's one of the challenges. Do we need county government? Do we need to rely and expand our regional planning commissions? But the reality is, things are getting more complicated and we need to avail ourselves of that. Similarly, EMS, fire, and police are facing challenges. They're facing challenges of having enough staff. EMS, for the most part, is not a volunteer endeavor anymore and more and more, our fire departments are seeing less and less people. So what do we do? Some places in Vermont are already talking about regionalization. Moving ahead, these are services we want, we need, and we need to try and figure out how to do that in the 21st century. Now, I want to close with a little bit of hope here. As I said, you don't have to go far to find bad news. And I think if you look around, it's easy to see problems like climate and say, what can we do? Well, we can do a lot and we are. We look around the world, we see armed conflicts around and wonder, can they be solved? So here's a little bit of hope that came to Vermont. Last month, the president of the Irish Senate, Senator Mark Daly, came to visit us. He was returning a visit from Irish-American legislators in Vermont and across the country who traveled to Ireland at their own expense to help celebrate 25 years of the Good Friday Peace Accord. 25 years of an accord that he said, right until they signed it, there were people who thought this will never happen. This is after hundreds of years of conflict, hundreds of years of attempted genocide on the Irish by the English. Starvation, during the potato famines, the English were taking food out of Ireland. This is after years and years of bloody conflict, of bombings. And yet, with the help of a lot of American diplomacy, especially our Senator Pat Leahy, they were able to come to an agreement. 25 years of peace where it was thought this could never happen. I hope we can hold that hope up, that there are other conflicts around the world that will find their solutions. It won't be easy, but I do believe... It won't be easy, but I do believe that there's hope that we can do that, that we can do hard things together around the world, and here in Vermont, too. We can create a better future and leave a legacy of hope, especially for our kids. And I'm convinced that as slow as it can be, government can help bring good change. So thank you for the opportunity to work with you and to work for you and to help build the Vermont that works for all of us and help bring a better today and a better tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you, and I have to head to Dumerson now to give that report, too. I am around. You can always get in touch with me, email, phone, regular mail, but I always want to hear from you, and thank you again.
Great. Thank you.
So that's the end of our public speaking, and then I'm going to move to the Select Board. But before we do so, I know there were some hands up, and thank you, Howard Fairman, for pointing this out. Were there hands up that people wanted to ask a question or make a comment while the school reps were speaking? Am I right? Yes, Howard. Can we get Howard a mic? Or there's one right down here in the center. And my apologies for not seeing your hand earlier. Oops, I don't know if that mic is working. We can be patient.
How is this?
I think we can hear you.
I believe so. We're getting feedback. Anyway, I have two questions for the people from the school board. They could be addressed to either Ms. McAdoo or Ms. Chapman. The first one is, why is the school district budget voted from the floor and not by Australian ballot?
Ruby, do you want to try that mic that's right there in the center? Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the question, Mr. Fairman. And so what I can say about that is that our district was formed with articles of agreement, which are on.
Maybe, I'm wondering if we can use one mic at a time and maybe turn off that, the one that Ruby is using, and Howard, can you pass Ruby the mic? Thank you.
Hopefully, this is better. So when the district was formed, we have articles of agreement, which are on the district website. They were amended a year or two after we were formed to adjust a few things like the leadership councils, instituting those, and increasing the number of people from Brattleboro on the board. Anyway, it's articulated in there, some details around when and why we have the annual meeting. But I can say that there has been voices within the community asking that similar question, and a lot of the timing and how things are dictated with the budget come from the central office. There's a very tight timeline and things that need to happen. But I do think during COVID, we voted by Australian ballot, and I think that's an interesting question that I'm going to be asking the school board, myself as a city member, is to do an analysis of how many people voted during COVID when we were Australian ballot versus from the floor. But at the moment, that's articulated in our articles of agreement, and I think we would need a vote of our community in order to make some changes to that degree.
Great. So it looks like Howard has a second question. I don't see any other hands up, so I'm going to turn the mic back to Howard.
Thank you, my dear moderator. Regarding that one, so noted, and I guess we'll have to do something about that because that just a few people who show up at a meeting can decide to spend our $65 million seems somewhat over the top. My other question is, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank here. Apologies, I've drawn a blank on the second question.
No problem. We draw blanks all the time. Sometimes, oh, there's a hand up right behind you, Howard. Do you mind giving your name?
My name is Carolyn Oliver. I'm Chair of the Leadership Council here in Putney. This Thursday, both the Leadership Council and the PTO are having a combined meeting. We'd love to invite you all to attend. It's at 5 o'clock in the library, and involvement in our community with our extraordinary principal has just created a number of really exciting initiatives and possibilities, and please know that your thoughts and your presence would be very welcome, and we can maintain the vitality of our community through this kind of participation. So please come Thursday, 5 o'clock in the library, PTO and Leadership Council.
Great. And now Howard has remembered his second question. I'm going to give it to Howard now.
I'm saying the Putney Central School Library, not the Putney Library.
Okay, sorry. Howard?
Thank you, my dear moderator. My second question is regarding the tax rates. The representatives said that the Wyndham Southeast School District budget is increasing by 3%. They also said that the state education property tax is projected to increase by 20%. There's a significant disparity there. Could one of our representatives perhaps assist us with reconciling this difference?
Ruby McAdoo.
I can start, and Laura can chime in, because I got to tell you, this is not easy. The tax formula for setting the school tax rate is complicated, and what's going on in Montpelier is not making it easier. And so in the formula, that if you just imagine you're in like second grade math, and you're looking at a formula, and you have a multiplier. The yield is set by the legislature based on, they have to get all the budgets to come in, and then they make some determinations about what the yield would be, which will be a multiplier that will set the tax rate. And most years, we don't get the yield until June anyway, but they have a best guess of what it would be. And so at town meeting, we have a reasonable-ish idea of what the tax rate will be, and this year, that reasonable-ish idea is near 20% for us. And it's not just us, it's the entire state. And I would venture a guess that districts that had higher budgetary increases, there were some that approached 15% budget expense increases, which is unreasonable and fiscally irresponsible, those people probably have astronomical tax rates that are projected. So I think the expectation, and really, Mike Merwicki would be the one to answer this, I think the expectation is that Montpelier will not leave us out to dry. I'm looking at Fletcher, who I've heard in the Canada Forum, has some maybe opinions that maybe they might. But I would be shocked if we are going to have a 20% tax rate, but no one can say with surety what it will be. And that's why the Independent Budget Review Committee has a preliminary report. They are not saying anything beyond, this is what our analysis is right now. But hopefully, by the annual meeting, we'll have some more solid information, but the yield, which is that multiplier, will not be set until June. I don't know if that answers the question, but I think that's the best I can do with my little brain.
Okay. Just because I see Mike has his hand up in the back, we do have a couple items before we get to the warned items, so we're now speaking on things that were not warned, but I'm going to give the mic to Mike Merwicki unless somebody tells me otherwise.
Well, thank you. I just want to follow up on what Ruby had to say, is that there's been a lot of consternation when the governor came out in December and said, you should expect a 20% tax rate in property taxes because of education. I think he did a disservice to all of us because we don't know until all the numbers are counted. Now, the local budget here came in at 3% increase. Just north of us, Wyndham Northeast came in at 3%. When I look around the state, I'm not seeing anything close to 20%. And I think, you know, it's one thing to keep preaching gloom and doom to try and get elected or reelected, and it seems to be that there are some people looking to preach gloom and doom to take political advantage of it. I think there's a lot more hope out there. I don't think we're going to be looking at tax rates like that, and I know the legislature is working hard to make sure that we can provide a quality education at a price that Vermonters can afford, and we won't know until all the budgets are counted up and we create the yield, which is probably going to be May or whatever. But we are going to be working to make sure that it's not going to be like that. So I appreciate the work that the school boards are doing, and we're going to be trying to work with them to take care of that.
Okay, great. I have one other hand up. I do want to move to the Select Board, so please keep it short. Laura Chapman?
Just as a point of clarification, I never refer to 20% on anything. I didn't talk about it because it's so up in the air. So you've found that somewhere else, Howard.
Okay. Select Board, would you like to take on a dedication? Are your mics working, or would you rather come here?
Sir, we'll do it here.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So this is the, is it the dedication? Wait, dedication or the community service?
This is the dedication.
All right, the dedication for this year, it goes to two people. One is Eva Monden, 1941 to 2023, and the other one is Stephen Anderson, 1932 to 2023.
And you can find out more information at the very front of your town report. And the next item I have is a community service award. And that's also in your town report.
Okay, so this year's community service award goes to Ruby McAdoo. Not only does Ruby work tirelessly for Putney Cares, Putney Community Cares, and she is a school board member, she continues to do more on top of that. She leads on the PCS Leadership Committee and on the PTO. She's always reaching out to make sure everyone is aware of what is happening in the community. She makes sure the homeschoolers are aware of events and encouraging all committee events. Ruby is the Putney Pool's Facebook organizer, getting the word out whenever it rains that the pool is closed, and publishing all the events. Ruby also organized the entire Putney Halloween. Ruby has gone above and beyond the call of duty as a community advocate for Putney. She serves on multiple boards, task forces, and committees that support a wide range of Putney projects. Furthermore, she takes her work with PCC to heart, often not just organizing care and support for those who need it, but also volunteering the legwork to get it done herself. Whether it's delivering meals, moving furniture, or transporting groups of kids around Putney, Ruby is always the first to step up and offer to help out.
Thank you so much, and I was just a little bit too late to go to Karen and say, don't give me an award. You need to give me incentive for when I'm like Claire Wilson's age. I mean, I need, you know, I'm going to be here for decades. But thank you so much, and it's not just me doing many of those things, but I appreciate the acknowledgement.
And now we turn to the town manager, who has some kind things to say.
Okay, first thing is a disclaimer. I've been under the weather for two weeks now. I did not test for, I tested negative for COVID and RSV, but I'm a little under the weather, and I may forget things, or I may not be able to connect A and B as quickly as I'd like today. So just be patient with me as I try to get through the day. First off, I just want to recognize three employees for the Town of Putney. The first one is Chief Tom Goddard. As a veteran of Putney for the last 23 years, I want to say thank you for your service. I was surprised to have a resignation, and I think when people make that decision to resign, it's a very difficult decision. And I just want to thank him and wish him the best in his future endeavors. And he's going to, there's some big shoes to fill right there, and there'll be more conversations about moving forward with the fire department. I do want to acknowledge that the article in the Brattleboro Reformer, I was appalled by that write-up. There was a positive story there with the retirement of the chief, and it was entwined with a report, an analysis that was done on the fire department, which, in my opinion, that report is not as bad as it reads, okay? We have some work to do, but at least we have a guide, and I can honestly say, that report, I can utilize with other departments in the Town of Putney. So I think we're going to move forward with some great strides, and we're going to figure this out together. Mike's already said, you know, there's a problem here in Vermont, and it's not just Vermont, it's across the country, and we have to work together. But I do appreciate Tom's dedication to the fire service, and he will be missed. The second person I want to acknowledge is Brian Harlow, who is our road foreman, will be stepping down effective May 1st. He's a 17-year veteran here in Putney. As everyone knows, his family business is excavating and construction in roads. Another big position to fill, big shoes right there. I appreciate Brian's work ethic and his knowledge, his institutional knowledge when it comes to roads and bridges, and he's going to be missed. I mean, I rely on him like 150%, so. So the third person is on the highway department as well, Jason Newton. He's been with us for 11 and a half years. He will be leaving the highway department effective May 1st. He is our grader operator, and if anybody knows, that's a piece of equipment that you just don't learn. You've got to practice on it. So I just want to let folks know that there's going to be a learning curve. We're going to be rebuilding. there's going to be a learning curve. We're going to be rebuilding and restructuring the highway department, and it's probably going to be a good two years. I'm looking at somebody right now internally to replace Brian. But I'll be looking at hiring another person. We do, we just added a new person, Jesse Amadon from Putney. He just started. He actually, his business closed, the paper business down in Putney. And they sent him to school to get a CDL, and he is currently working for the Town of Putney. So it's a challenge right now, to say the least, but I think if we all work together, we can figure this out. And I also want to thank all my other people. Kim Monroe, who's my administrative assistant and treasurer. Most of her time right now is treasurer. I want to welcome Rachel Ryan. She's on the very end. She is the Assistant Town Clerk, and she is your communications liaison. And three-quarters of her time is communications right now. John Johnson, who is behind the curtain, as our town clerk, often stays busy. I can honestly say that we have, we're probably short a person and a half at town hall right now. And we've been running very lean for several years, and we can't continue to do it. Also, on the highway department, I want to thank Lenny Howard, Pat Wood, and Skip Thurber, and all of our on-call fire responders and emergency personnel. And if I forgot anybody, thank you.
Okay. Are you ready to deliberate? This is an exciting time. Once a year, the citizens of towns in Vermont get to come together and argue about items of public concern. It's an opportunity to hear each other, to disagree with each other, to consider different points of view, and it is an ennobling process, an ancient process. I can't help but bring a little quote from a friend of mine, a dear friend no longer with us, Aristotle, who said, "That for the many of whom each individual is not a good person, when they meet together may be better than a few good. Just as a feast to which many contribute is better than a dinner provided out of a single purse." In other words, potlucks are wonderful things. That means you get a lot of people around the table, and the meal could be better than if it came from a single purse. We don't have to start this process smart. We can bring our fallibilities with us, but through talking to each other, the idea is, we can reach smarter decisions. So the way we do this is through Robert's Rules of Order. And I gather that there are handouts put out on the seats to give you a sense of how this operation works. There is a great book about this. This is Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition. So for those of you who want to go into the details, that's here. And I'm also grateful that this year Fletcher Proctor is willing to be the parliamentarian. So you have somebody besides the moderator to appeal to about rules of order. So I'm going to just go over what those rules of order are, the key pieces. Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. You cannot change state law, but you can change Robert's Rules with a two-thirds majority. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration, and debate on the article may begin. Articles may only have one amendment at a time associated with them. And amendments to an article likewise may only have one amendment at a time associated with them. So we are only going to amend amendments, and then we have to stop. Then we bring it back to the actual article. After you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given an opportunity to do so. And so I'm going to be scanning after I watch somebody speak to make sure that there's other hands out there. We are looking for more voices, and it's only if I don't see any other hands that I will go back a second time. Division of the House, this is probably the most exciting thing we can do as a body, can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. State law provides for a paper ballot vote on the request of seven voters, unless the town has made other arrangements. Again, before or after a voice vote, or after a division of the House. So this means that I'm going to ask you for a voice vote, but someone could say, "division." If that's the case, then there needs to be a show of hands or rising. And at that point, someone could request a paper ballot. That would require seven people. I don't know if my time as moderator, we've ever gone that far into deciding the vote. But we could if we wanted to, if you wanted to. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator. I will respond to Madam Moderator. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you have raised your hands. You must be recognized to speak, even to move the previous question. After being recognized, please stand up, wait for a microphone, then give your name and speak in a loud voice so that your comments may be heard by everyone. And it looks as if we're going to need to use that one roving mic and not use this mic here in front. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You will not be allowed to engage in personal attacks on a member of the body or their motives. And that's a hard one, but I'm going to be looking for it. I'm looking for dissent. I don't mind you being somewhat rude, but I'm really going to ask you to reframe it if I think you're impugning somebody's motives. State law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. This means you cannot take binding action under the article "other business," and you can't amend warned articles such that they would deal with business that hasn't been warned. So we're really going to be focusing on what has been brought before you in the warning. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont state law until a point is reached where the body has begun working on another article. And that's why I'm very careful to make sure that there's a pause before I read the next article. Because the minute I go into the next article, there is no possibility of reconsideration. This means that if you have voted down an article, a motion can be made to reopen consideration of this article by a person on the prevailing side. So yes, I will need to ask you how you voted on the earlier article. My role as a moderator is to help you accomplish the business you intend to do. Please raise your hand to ask questions if you don't understand what is happening, or if you think what is happening is wrong for some reason. If you want to do something but don't know how to proceed. If I can't answer your question, that's when I turn to Fletcher Proctor. And please tell me if you feel I am ruling inappropriately, improperly. You have the right to challenge the moderator's ruling, and that just requires a majority vote. Only registered voters of Putney may vote on any article before the meeting. And before I begin with the first article, I'm feeling Eva right now. Boy, am I feeling Eva. Now, sometimes I didn't want her to call the question. I thought she was cutting off debate. I really tried to ignore her, and sometimes she'd just start to blurt it. So Eva, if you hear me, don't call the question. However, she's why I'm here, and she always, in town meeting, was willing to give minority positions her ear. So let us start with Article 1. To choose all town officers required by law to be elected by Australian ballot. I don't need a motion? I don't need a second. You all are doing that on your own in the privacy of the polling booths behind the curtain. Article 2. To elect three trustees to the Putney Public Library Board from the floor. Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second from the floor? And can you say your name? Melanie, I should know it, Fletcher. Melanie Fletcher is our second. It has been moved and seconded to elect three trustees of the Putney Public Library Board from the floor. And you can refer to page 13 in the town report to find out more about the library. Would somebody like to put forward the trustees' names? Janice Baldwin. Could we get a mic for Janice Baldwin? And thank you, Lexi, for being our runner today.
Good morning. I'm Janice Baldwin, Priest Drive, Putney, and I'm also Chair of the Putney Library Board, I'm happy to say. I'm pleased this morning to nominate three trustees whom the Library Board has approved to serve beginning today, March 5th, after this vote. They are in alphabetical order: Ben Lord, returning for a three-year term; Jim Oliver, also returning for a three-year term; and Penny Weingarten, for her first three-year term.
Okay. So we now have a slate. Would you like us to vote for all three at once?
Please.
Okay. So we are now voting on the trustees of the Putney Public Library Board, Ben Lord, Jim Oliver, and Penny Weingarten. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 2 passes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good start. I would like to indulge you all, just for a couple of minutes, to say a few words about the library. First of all, the Library Board and the staff really want to thank all the taxpayers for your ongoing support every year for our operations. I want to reassure you that we take this money very seriously and do work really hard, both the staff and the board, to take really good care of how we spend your money, because it is your library. You know, whenever I tell people that I'm on the Library Board, and I did that this morning, and they said, "Oh, I love the library." "The library's so amazing." And that's because we have amazing staff, whom I'd like to acknowledge this morning. It's the dedication, creativity, and hard work of Emily Zervis, our director, Julia Van Ronsum, our really creative and innovative children's librarian, and all the rest of our staff, that you have this library to call amazing and to say it's someplace you really love. We just finished our strategic plan for the next five years, and our first priority is to make sure that everybody in Putney feels truly welcome at the library. So please come by and discover for yourself how that feels, and what it feels, what it takes to make our library amazing and be a place that you feel you can say you love. And finally, not everything the library does happens inside the library. We partner with Putney Community Cares, with Next Stage, with the school, with the Food Shelf, with all the organizations in town, to bring you creative, fun programs. And on April 8th, we invite you all to come to Putney Central School, where the library and the school will be hosting a big Eclipse Day party. That's April 8th at 2 o'clock here at Putney Central School. Thanks, everybody, and please do come by the library and by our table in the back. Emily's there if you'd like to speak to her. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to Article 3. To see if the town will approve the minutes of the last town meeting. Do I have a motion? Sue Coakley? Yep. And do we have a second? And, oh, I forgot your name.
Heather Small.
Heather?
Small.
Small. Heather Small is the second. It has been moved and seconded to see if the town will approve the minutes of the last town meeting, which you can find on page 76 of the town report. Do we have any questions? Additions? Amendments? It looks as if we can approve the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 3 is passed. To hear and act upon the reports, Article 4, sorry, to hear and act upon the reports of the town officers. Do I have a motion? Janice Baldwin. Do I have a second? Elizabeth Christie. It has been moved and seconded to hear and act upon the reports of the town officers. Do we have any questions? Comments? I know this is a funny vote. We are voting on hearing. But it does have action in there, so I don't know what you're doing quietly, but go for it. So all those in favor of Article 4, to hear and act upon the reports of the town officers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it, and Article 4 passes. We will now move on to Article 5. Shall the voters of the Town of Putney authorize general fund expenditures for expenses of $1,825,436.64, of which $1,485,386.64 shall be raised by taxes and $340,050 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion? So moved. Peg Alden. Do we have a second? Lucia Torino. It has been moved and seconded on Article 5. Shall the voters of the Town of Putney authorize general fund expenditures for expenses of $1,825,436.64, of which $1,485,386.64 shall be raised by taxes and $340,050 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025? What's, I have a, that it is now, Article 1 is now open for discussion. I do see a hand coming from the floor, so I would like to recognize that first and then take it from there. And if you could give us your name, sir?
Ellen Miller. I'm from East Putney, not Putney. I think it would be irresponsible to spend this much money without first dealing with the bombshell that the governor dropped with a 20% possible increase in taxation. Because myself and people I know are struggling now. And we're going to pass all of this, and then the state is going to add additional 20%. I think this should be put on the table. We have until the 1st of July. And that sends a note back to the state that you have until the 1st of July to decide what you're going to do with this devastating comment, or you're going to hit us with up to 20% additional taxes.
Okay. So Alan Miller, what I hear you saying, I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, is this a motion to lay on the table or to postpone to a definite time? So at this point, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand your request. Can we, Lexi, can we give him the mic?
We have until, we haven't, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We have until July 1 before the state's effect. We have until July 1 before the state's effect. And this will send a note to the state to get your act together and let us know what this is all about and how bad you're going to, you're going to hit us with it.
Okay.
Before we spend this other money, because if they hit us with an additional 20%, we may want to take back 10% of this money.
Great. So I'm reading this as a postponement to a definite time, which is July 1st. And this is a subsidiary motion, which requires a second. Do we have a second? And I have a second over there, and do you mind saying your name, please? Alan, if you could give the mic to Lexi. Robert Stromberg? I didn't get the last name. Stromberg, thank you, Robert. So it has been moved and seconded to postpone Article Five to a definite time. This does require a debate. So I have heard an argument in favor of this motion. I would like to hear an argument against. Would somebody like to speak against the motion to postpone to a definite time?
Hi, Swift Everdy, sorry. My legal name is Corinne Kennedy-Spielman. I would argue against this, because our town needs to move forward on all the many, many things that they have allocated this money for. And if we wait another six months, it will be difficult to make decisions on hiring a new fire chief, a new road foreman, and all the things that, I know that, I believe, my understanding from working with the Select Board, is that this decision today makes decisions tomorrow and in the next few weeks. I don't think we can wait months before passing this.
Okay. So we have now heard an argument against the motion to postpone to July 1st. Is there somebody who would like to speak in favor? Howard Fairman, you have your hand up.
Madam Moderator, I would simply like to comment regarding what the previous speaker said, that yes, indeed, we're going to need that money, but actually, that money will not even become available until July 1st. So while we may or may not be in favor of the motion to postpone, that consideration really is not valid at this time. Thank you.
So I'm going to call that a point of information. I'm looking for somebody who wishes to speak for the motion to postpone. Yes. Daniel, if you could give your full name.
Daniel Hartsigan. I'm in favor of postponing it, because it seems like taxes are going up all over the place, businesses are leaving Vermont. It's just getting too, too hard to do business in Vermont. So I believe we need to stop, slow down, let's consider the people that have been here for generations, that are in their homesteads, that might be booted out of Vermont, might have to go to Tennessee or whatnot. I'm in favor of slowing down when it comes to increasing taxes, because it's getting out of hand, you know?
Great, thank you. So we've just heard somebody speaking for the motion to postpone. Is there somebody who would like to speak against? Jeanette White in the back. Thank you, Lexi.
Thank you. So after reading, Jeanette White, after reading last year's minutes, I decided I wasn't going to say anything this year at all, because my name appeared way too many times last year. But I am going to speak against this motion. And I may completely misunderstand the issue, but the issue is the school tax, not the town tax at all. The town property tax is not going to be affected by an increase in the school property tax. It will increase our overall tax, but the 20% is not going to be added on, even if it is 20%, it's not going to be added on top of our municipal tax, but on our school tax. So while it all comes out of our pockets, it is not, this issue is not relevant to the municipal property tax, I believe.
So that is speaking against the motion on the table. Would somebody like to speak for the motion on the table? The motion to table to July 1st. Yes. And the mic is coming.
Hi, I'm Jody Graves, formal name Joan. I hear what you said, Jeanette, that they're two different, but Mr. Miller was saying that it's not because, we understand that they're two different taxes, but we all have one budget at home and one amount of money. So sometimes you have to take out of one pocket for the other. So I believe what we're saying is we don't want our overall tax bill to go up, so some things might have to be shaved down a little bit on the town level. That's what I heard in the motion.
Okay. So just to remind people, we're debating the motion itself, which is to postpone, and so we are moving towards a vote on that. I do see some hands up. Then we will discuss the article itself, and there will be opportunities to make amendments, just to alert people to that option. So we just heard a motion to speak, we just heard someone speaking in favor of the motion to postpone. Would somebody like to speak against it? Laura Chapman?
I don't necessarily want to speak against it, although every instinct in my body is screaming no right now. What I want to ask, first off, I want to point out that there is a school budget info session on the 12th for anybody that wants to talk about the school budget with the school board and the administration. And I want to ask the Select Board and Karen how it would impact the town services if we were to do this right now.
Hello? All right. So currently, we're in fiscal '24 budget, which will end June 30. So nothing is going to be impacted through June. I appreciate Mr. Miller's motion. The general fund budget for '25 is up 9.4%. That's a big number. The general fund also is not level funded. And what I mean by that, level funding means there are increases that are not in my control, like medical insurance and other things that just increase year after year. Okay? So this general fund has extra money in it, okay? And thinking with Mr. Miller, if, if the education tax were to increase by 20%, is there a way we could reduce the general fund by 10%? It's a possibility. There are some things I can compromise in the general fund. But if we continue to do that year after year, it just keeps, it's going to impact. So at some point, we need to have a balanced budget over a period of time. And I'm thinking short period of time. And anything can happen, folks. So like I said, we've been very lean with staffing. I've restructured some departments. It's in the fiscal year '25 budget, which has increased the budget. I've put $30,000 in there for capital reserve fund, because $15,000 was being put away, and somehow that went away. So if we're going to do any capital improvements, we have to have money in a reserve fund to be able to do that. Otherwise, we're going to be borrowing. We still have long-term debt that we're going to be paying off for a while. Two of the bonds are water and sewer, which are user-fee based. And then we have the gravel pit. And the fire station bond will be paid off in approximately four years. And that has been paid for by the private schools through their contribution. So technically, it has not impacted the tax rate. So yeah, can we trim some out of here? I'm sure we could. It's going to take a little time. And my expectation, too, is that each department would have to look at, you know, what can come out. Currently, with the fire department and the operations analysis, I know we're going to have to spend some money there.
Karen, Karen, I'm just going to stop you for a second, just because right now, we're just debating the postponement.
Okay.
And I think this is going to be very useful information.
Okay.
Depending on what the vote happens next.
Okay.
So I just want to focus, everybody, on the motion that's on hand, is whether or not to postpone until July 1st. I believe what we heard is somebody speaking in favor, and then we got some points of information and clarification. Is there somebody who wishes to speak against the motion? Against the motion to postpone? You in the back?
Aiden Parides. I think this would be another point of information or inquiry. Granted, a 20% increase would be stark and granted. Ultimately, the taxpayer doesn't matter what bucket their dollar goes into, to a certain But earlier this morning, I think we heard two people throw doubt into the idea that it would be that high as 20%. So I'm wondering if one of those people or somebody else could make a statement as to how plausible an increase of that much actually is.
Is there somebody who wants to, can answer? Is it Aiden? Aiden's question?
So in answer to this, in part, I want to encourage people to go to the table at the back. Just as you're exiting, there is a budget, and in a school district budget. And in that, there's a page that helps to understand what all the multipliers are, and the CLA, and the yield, what the factors are that are going into this 20% number. And actually, it's on paper, it's currently, right now, 17 or something like that. But, you know, we round up to 20. So I think the surety, the reason I throw doubt in the way that Aiden said, is that I hear Mike Murwicky when he speaks, I've heard Emily Kornheiser, who is a representative who chairs the committee that is overseeing this particular process and will set, that will set the yield. And they have doubts. They, they would be shocked if the rate was as high as the speculation is now. But, you know, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you where it's going to land. But I certainly think that, I cannot see a reality where we have 17% as our school tax rate.
So just a reminder that we're debating right now the motion to postpone until July 1st. Is there somebody who would like to speak against the motion? And let's see, who is, I saw the hand in the back of the gray shirt first?
Mary Houghton. I've worked with a lot of budgets. The fiscal year starts July 1. We need to do something well before July 1, so that the town knows what they're doing. We could vote the budget, we could vote the budget down. I don't know what I'm doing. We could vote down the budget.
Is it a mic on the Select Board table, maybe? Is this why he's turning off all the mics on the Select Board table? Is that going to work? Do you want to try again, Mary?
Now it doesn't work at all. We could vote the budget down now, or we could pass it now. If we vote it down now, we'd still have time before July 1st for all the people who are concerned about the potential school tax increase to make changes. But the town needs to know in advance what they're going to do. We can't wait until the end of June to pass a budget and start making plans then.
Great, thank you. So does somebody want to make any argument for the motion? I'm going to start moving us towards a vote. This is for the motion to, point of information, Christopher Irian. Can we get the mic? We hope the mic will work.
So my question is, if we delay, what is the process for approving the budget? Do we have to have a town vote separately from what we're doing today?
Anybody want to answer? Christopher's question. Wow. One mic amongst them. Hello?
Yeah. Okay. Should I go somewhere else?
Yes.
Yes? Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the process would have to be that we would call a special town meeting. And I would also like to encourage us to do that before July 1st, because as was pointed out, the fiscal year starts July 1st, and that would make things, Karen's life, very
Are you making an amendment to the motion to postpone?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend, to May 1st.
So we have an amendment to the motion to postpone. Do we have a second? The second in front, Doug. Doug, what's your last name? Aren't you Doug? Doug Grant. So we have a motion and second to amend the motion to postpone to May 1st. We are now discussing the amendment to the motion. Boy, wow. This is already, we're into the weeds with Robert's rules. Would somebody, and Eileen just spoke in favor of the amendment. Is there somebody who wishes to speak against the amendment? Against the amendment?
Gabe Foster. When will we know what the school tax increase will be?
Is there anyone who can answer Gabe's question? Ruby McAdoo?
The yield is not set until into June. That's all I got. There will be some more information, so there's more surety, once the school budgets come in throughout the state, but the final yield won't be set, which will set the tax rate until into June.
Okay. So we're now debating the amendment to the motion to postpone. Is there somebody who wishes to speak against the amendment? And I'm getting, actually, I, okay, red vest in front. And I'm getting, actually, I, okay, red vest in front. Could you tell us your name?
Hi, my name's Peter Stickney. I have a question about the amendment by, by moving to May 1. Are you actually moving to warn on April 1, and vote on May 1, or warn on May 1, and vote on June 1?
So the question was, if you are, the motion is to postpone to May 1, does that
This is fun. So, in order to have a special, so it's 30 days prior to, we have to warn the meeting 30 days prior to a special meeting. So yes, that would push it back to April 1.
Great. So we are now debating the amendment to the motion to postpone. May we be, okay, Lionel. I'm sorry, first to the gentleman in the black.
I have a question. Bob Meyer.
Great. And maybe this is so wonderful, this mic is now working. If other people think they want to participate, you might get closer to this mic in anticipation. Thank you.
So the question-
And could you just tell us your name?
Bob Meyer.
Bob Meyer.
So my question is, the, is the school budget part of our general budget? And what percentage of our general budget is that? They're totally separate. So the, so that any raising of the school budget would not affect our general expenditures? It would just be added to it, correct? Okay. Again, what percentage are we looking at here? Because if the school budget is only 5% compared to the, I'm using it as an example, compared to the, the town budget, then a 20% increase doesn't, isn't that great? So I'm confused of what that whole picture looks like. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does somebody want to answer Bob's question? Is any mic working over there?
Hello?
A third municipal budget to roughly two-thirds school budget, is my understanding.
Okay. So we are now debating the amendment to the motion to postpone to May 1. Can we move to a vote on? No. Josh.
Thank you, Josh Lachlan. I just want to state that one of the problems is, if we move it to May 1, we still won't have the education budget issue solved. So I don't think that solves our problem. I think it's important, to the person overhear's point, that we have a budget in place for the select board and town management to be able to plan for next year. Because, for example, if we are looking to hire a supervisor of a highway department, but we can't guarantee them a salary, that's a problem. So whether, you know, if we don't know what the budget is going towards July 1, that's a big disadvantage for us. I think that one possible way of looking at this is that we, the voters, when we're voting on the budget, make a recommendation to the select board to, if we accept the budget, to try and trim the budget as effectively as they can, leading up to July 1, and particularly if the education budget increases by as much as it does. We could just say, we want you to slim your budget by 10%. We can't tell them what part of the budget to slim, and so that would be up to the select board to decide that. But we could vote for a budget that's 10% less. I personally wouldn't recommend that, because that's hard to do in any given year. But I think we could also vote to approve a budget, with the understanding that if the school budget comes in significantly higher, we, the voters, are of the opinion that the select board should dramatically decrease their expenditures for next year.
So Josh, what I heard is that you're voting against the amendment to the motion to postpone. Is that correct?
I don't think that that, yes, I don't think that that motion, that that amendment would solve the problem, which is that we won't have a school budget.
Great, great.
I would also, since I'm already up here, say that I don't think it's a great idea to not pass a budget until July 1, for the reasons I already went. But if we do pass a budget, with the understanding that the select board is going to look at, and that, that would basically just be an opinion of the voters, that the select board needs to decrease their expenditure pretty dramatically.
So I just want to give everybody a procedural moment. We're first going to have to debate, or vote on the amendment, and then we're going to go back to the motion to postpone. So I'm, I'm thinking that may we be ready to vote on the amendment? Okay. So, all those in favor of the amendment, which means that the motion to postpone would be till May 1, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and the amendment does not pass. We are now debating the motion to postpone to July 1.
Thanks, Lisa Papazian. I really have a question. Are we talking about Article 5 only right now? Or are we about to have the same conversation on Article 6?
We are only discussing the motion to postpone on Article 5.
Can I make an amendment?
Is it a good idea? You may, you may, right now, but you should understand what is in front of us right now. We are just discussing, we have not gotten into the merits of Article 5, or any of the possibilities of amending Article 5. All we are doing right now is discussing a motion to postpone to July 1. How do you wish to argue on that?
My argument is, I can't, unless there is a substantial different consideration for the highway budget versus the municipal budget, I would amend, offer an amendment to have this motion to postpone apply to both.
I'm looking at my parliamentarian. It's, it's, we can only deal with one article at a time. This is the beauty of Robert. If you're feeling overwhelmed by life, he only lets one person speak at a time about one issue at a time. Isn't that lovely? Thank you. Thank you. It looks like we may be ready to debate the motion to postpone, as it was originally offered to July 1. All those, oh, before, before I go to vote, I have a hand up. Tom Aronberg.
I'll try for beer.
No, Tom. You must, must get through the static monster. It will make you strong. And Alexi, oh yeah, go ahead.
It builds up my steps, thank you. That was a significant addition. I, I would speak against the amendment to postpone, the motion to postpone.
The motion.
For better or for worse, the school budget and the municipal budget are separate items. They're separate governmental entities, and they, even though we pay taxes for both, that we also pay state taxes and federal ta, we pay a lot of taxes to a lot of different entities. If people are concerned about the school budget, my, I would encourage them to participate and go to school board meetings and discuss the school budget, which is completely different from the budget we're, we're discussing today. We don't, today, we're discussing the municipal budget, and to take, to take hide out, to take, I don't remember the expression, flesh out of one to, to make up for the other. I understand, I pay my taxes too, and I understand the motivation, but I think that we should treat the municipal budget as its own item, and treat the school board budget as its item, at, at that venue, which is not this venue. Thank you.
Great. So that is an argument against the motion to postpone to July 1. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor of the motion to postpone to July 1, who has not already spoken, or who has a new argument? Seeing no hands, it appears we may be ready to vote. We are now voting on the motion to postpone until July 1. All those in favors, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nay have it. The nays have it, and the motion to postpone does not pass. We are now moving to Article 5. And because I read it once, I'm not going to read it again. I would like somebody, and that is Peg Alden. Do you wish to speak on behalf of the, of Article 5? Or do we want to turn it to Karen? I'm sorry. We are now, we are still on Article 5. We never moved beyond Article 5. We're in a deep embrace with Article 5. This could take some time. And maybe while the Karen or Peg is getting their, their thoughts together, I recommend that you turn 2 pages, 26 of the town report, to get the details, or 32, in which you will find notes on the general fund, in which Karen has itemized certain things for your We're looking for a mic to help. This one doesn't seem to work. Sure. We're going to buddy up.
Here. Have a seat, Karen. All right. Can you hear me? All right. So, general fund, like I said, was up 9% over last year. What we try to do, too, every year, come January, I send out memos and say, okay, no more spending. So just because these figures are in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean we have to have them. So we're very conservative when we can be. Again, there's added items in this budget this year, that we haven't had in the past. And I want to state that the majority of the money, property taxes, that pays for the operating budget, is any 1%. What we need to figure out is how to bring in other revenue, to offset your property taxes. And that's a challenge sometimes. You know, we do get state money, we do get grants, so that helps. But the majority of paying for the operating expenses is property taxes. Let me see. Again, like I said, I've created in this budget for 25. In here, you're going to see a zoning department, which was added. So like I said earlier, I'm the town manager, I'm the zoning administrator. And with the changes in zoning, and the increase for housing, we're going to be looking at modernization, modernization of our bylaws. And through that process, there's going to be more detailed attention for a zoning administrator to handle all that work. So that budget is like $29,450, I believe. The other addition here is trying to staff town hall. So in this new budget is a, I can't even think right now, assistant treasurer, because honestly, we should have a backup, in case something happens to Kim, or she's on vacation. And so that money's in there as well. I've moved money around, too, to offset the treasurer's office. That's also in the budget. And then, one addition I did put in there, was $30,000 for the capital reserve fund. So again, if we're going to look at capital improvements, we have to have some sort of fund to pull from. And money has not been going into that fund. And over the years, basically, any surplus, or fund balance, I should say, fund balance, it remains in the operating budget in case of an emergency. And right now, we're able to operate, in case of an emergency, for 30 days. So if some wild thing ever happened, and everything just shut down, we would have to, you know, be able to pay those expenses. And right now, for the general fund, we can only cover 30 days. Our auditor would like to see us at 60. That's a big ask, but we're getting there. So there's some realignment with compensation. Oh, excuse me, that's a, that's a highway, sorry. I think that might be, the other thing, too, is, in the general fund, we have appropriations, which the library budget, if you look at that, there's an appropriation that goes into the general fund for the operation of the library. And the library's budget, for the total budget, is $266,652. Also, the cemetery, in order to take care of our cemeteries, that's another appropriation in the budget. And the social, I don't want to say social agency, community service agencies, is another appropriation, that's embedded in the general fund budget. So those three numbers right there, too, are fairly high. So if you pick apart the budget, I mean, is there room that we could, you know, trim this down? There's a possibility. But by January, you know, I'm looking at this with a fine-toothed comb, and trying to save money. And I know that doesn't help with the tax rate, because once we set that tax rate, all I can hope for is that there's going to be a balance in the operating budget at the end of June.
So Karen, maybe I could get some questions from the floor?
Sure.
So we have a technical issue right now. You can tell, we're just using one microphone, which is not ideal. I'm tempted to ask for a break, in order to fix this problem. I know we haven't really gotten into the substantive issue yet, but, what?
Let's try 5 first. We've got to finish this.
Okay, let's try and finish up 5. I'm willing to push through. Okay. So are there any questions from the floor, comments from the floor? And I guess, Karen, you and I are going to be sharing a mic.
Sorry about that.
Yes, so we have from Howard Fairman. Can we get a mic to Howard? And just remind us, we're all discussing Article 5 as written.
Hmm, okay. This is a, a point of information for our town manager. You referred to a sum of money to be set aside to operate the town during 30 days in the event of some, of some emergency whereby the town would otherwise be unable to operate. Now, I'm finding it difficult to envision such a situation, and I wonder if you could enlighten us about what, what could happen, that the town would need extra money to operate during 30 days beyond the money we usually have. Thank you.
So that's a recommendation by the auditor, and it's been year after year. One situation I can, um, state is the highway department. When we had the July 2021 storms, where we lost 13 roads, um, we had to get a line of credit in order to make sure that we could operate through the end of the year. And that storm was the first month of our new budget. So if we would've tried to pay for our expenses through the highway budget and we didn't have a fund balance to cover that, Howard, um, we would've been in a deficit red, because FEMA, we just barely got the last of the FEMA money. So that's a situation right there. I don't see that happening with the general fund, but you just never know.
Okay, is there somebody who wishes to speak on Article 5? And I'm looking for somebody who hasn't spoken. Uh, is your name Bob?
My question for Karen is, what happens to money from a fiscal year if you, if you do not expend it all? Does it get rolled over into a contingency fund? Does it get rolled over to the next year? How does that happen if you don't spend all the money that's allocated? Like, that'll happen.
So that money has been, um, in the fund balance, and it's just been sitting there So at the end of the year, that money is still in the fund balance.
Do we have any other, uh, questions? Janice Baldwin, Article 5.
Thank you. Karen mentioned the allocation that goes to the library. I would just like to mention, a point out, and I believe this is correct, I don't have my book in front of me, our increase this year is 3.3%, and we are level funded. The bulk of that increase are things that we have no control over. As Karen mentioned, you know, the health insurance, dental, vision, pension, all those things are set. We have no control over that. Um, and the other thing is, this is not just about the library, but for everybody to know, that I think we make these adjustments, I really would like to, um, be sure that we don't consider, um, the staff salaries, um, of the, of the whole town. Our salaries, our wages are not totally competitive with the area, you know, and I think if we're gonna be having to replace people, we're just probably gonna have to, um, offer them more money than current staff are making. So that was one area that I would suggest we don't tamper with.
Okay. Any other discussions on Article 15? And I'm not going for and against right now, because it is such a big budget, uh, but if people wish to make, uh, Karen mentioned some things on her notes of, that could be reconsidered. There are ways to get into the weeds in this, and then we can start to get into more of a pro and con. I think I just saw, I'm spacing out on your names. Michael Wells, want, are you calling the question, Michael Wells?
Yes.
Calling the question requires a second, which I'm gonna then ask for, and I will also need a two-thirds vote. So it's not a simple majority, and I may need to count hands. So I'm looking for a second. Uh, it looks like Elizabeth Christie. So it has been moved and seconded to call the question. That ends debate. It requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of calling the question, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Could I hear those one more time? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It, oh, I've heard, somebody said division? Okay, thank you. So that will require the select board now to help. You will need to count, and we wanna make sure we get to two-thirds. So all select board members, please get ready to count. If you, uh, in order to call, we are now debating calling the question. All those in favor...
What does that mean?
Oh, to call the question means that we are ending debate.
What?
On Article 5. Uh, and Swift, if you would raise your hand, this is, I, I can't have people shouting from the floor. Okay. All the, to call the question means we end debate. We are going to go from this right to a vote. All those in favor of calling the question on Article 5, please indicate by raising your hands. And you'll need to keep them up. 97. You may put your hands down. When we, when we ask for division, we really have to count hands. That's why we're doing division as opposed to voice vote. So all those against calling the question, please raise your hands. 19. It appears that the ayes have it, the question has been called. We are now moving to a vote, no discussion. We are now voting on Article 5. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize general fund expenditures for expenses of $1,825,436.64, of which $1,485,386.64 shall be raised by taxes, and $340,050 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 5 is passed. I'm gonna suggest that we take a recess. Is there a chance we might get some of our microphone problems fixed? I'm hearing from the past, yes. And am I right that the lunch will be served soon? Anybody give me a time on that? Because what I was going to propose is that we recess until 1 o'clock, hoping that we will have had lunch and we will have fixed the microphone. Do I need a second on that? I'm looking at my, I think I can just call a recess. Yeah, I'm gonna be calling a recess. We need to fix this mic problem, it's very hard to moderate with a single mic. All right. Thank you. See you at 1.
Hello, everybody. We're starting again. Um, I am Wendy Harrison. I am one of your two state senators. I live in Brattleboro, and I'm going to give you an update of what I have been working on in Montpelier. So all of the senators serve on two committees. I serve on economic development, housing, and general affairs, and institutions. So on the economic development, housing, and general affairs, we've been working a lot on housing, which is what we did last year. Our work last year resulted in Act 47, which you might be familiar with. Um, one of the things it did was it required that duplexes be allowed throughout the state without any sort of zoning changes from town, so that is in effect now in Putney and has been for a while. This year, we're focusing on Act 250, which, uh, it's a longstanding development bill that is statewide, which has had many benefits, but it needs an update. The Natural Resources Board, who is the board that governs Act 250, convened a group of stakeholders over the summer, and it was a, a really well-thought-out group. It included developers of both private and public housing. It included conservationists. It included Chamber of Commerce and business folks, and many of those categories overlap. I don't, I don't mean to say that developers are not conservationists and the other way around, um, but it was obvious that we needed to move forward in updating Act 250. So what that group did, it had five goals, and I'm gonna read the goals, because it, it's important. So they were, one, to support and promote growth in compact settlement patterns. That is the way that Vermont has traditionally developed, and they saw value, and that was valued throughout all of them. Second one, to facilitate appropriate rural economic development. We have a lot of towns, um, who don't have water and sewer, they're isolated, they don't have zoning, they don't wanna be left out of economic development. Focus on critical and increased protections for key natural resources. So that's, uh, the environmental perspective, and I'll let you know more about that in a minute. Establish a clear, consistent, and navigable permit process. While developers are concerned about regulations, they're, uh, very much concerned about the process. Uh, they can handle, uh, right, much of the regulations are not, um, optional for Vermont or any state. Much of them come down from the federal government, but it's the inconsistency and, um, unknown character of the process that can really kill a project. And then the fifth was to minimize redundancies with other local, state, and federal regulations. So the plan, which is, uh, it's, I won't speak too much about it, but you may have heard about the tiers, tier one, tier two, and tier three. The entire state would be divided into different tiers of development. Tier one would be where towns have effective zoning, they have staff, they have water and sewer. So those would be places where the towns would take over Act 250 essentially. Um, so you wouldn't have to get an Act 250 permit if you were in these, um, locations, no matter how large your, your development was. Tier three, that would define areas that are very special environmental, um, areas, so wetlands, for example. Um, and in those areas, it would be probably more, uh, protective than current Act 250. Tier two would be in the middle of those, and, uh, for now, tier two would, um, include the, what, what Act 250 is now. So that's the overall, um, plan. There are still three other committees, uh, working on this. We passed out our bill a couple of weeks ago, we worked four weeks on it. Um, so there's, it has a long way to go before, before it's finished. Um, and once, assuming it does get adopted, then it has a long way to go to actually get implemented, because it's going to take a remapping of the entire state. So some of them think they can get this done in two to three years. Our committee was skeptical, um, possibly they could, but, uh, we put some interim exemptions in so, to, to spur housing in the meantime. So one of those was to have, um, 75 units of housing allowed in towns with permanent zoning and bylaws in an area served by water and sewer. So you could do that without an Act 250 permit, which is a, a, a very big, um, difference. And then we amended the appeals process, and these would go into effect immediately once it's passed, which would be higher thresholds for residents to appeal municipal housing decisions. We would, we set goals, time goals, for the court to act on appeals. Uh, we can't tell the judiciary what to do, but we can encourage them to. And then it adds a judge to the Superior Court to, to help those appeals go through faster. So, I know I'm going kinda long. Uh, so just a couple more things. That's the longest thing I have. Global foundries, uh, I don't know if you heard about the global foundries expansion, it's pretty exciting. Um, that was made possible because of 4.5 million that we appropriated last year to go after the federal funding, and so now 125 million is going to the Vermont plant. It's gonna be the first U.S. facility capable of high-volume gallium nitride semiconductors. These are used in electric vehicles, power grids, data centers, smartphones, so that's really exciting, and that's a, that's a very long-term, solid economic development, um, project. And then I wanna mention something. We, uh, in that committee, we, we deal with miscellaneous, and one of the things we're doing is something called kids code. So this is, uh, computer code, and we got lots of testimony, especially from middle schoolers, about how addictive and damaging the, um, the algorithms used by internet companies are, uh, for kids. And so what we are proposing is, uh, a way to, to address that. And so we're saying that the companies cannot use those codes when they know that kids are accessing the, um, the, the, the sites. So that's, we have a, a lot of, um, uh, hope that, that that is going to, to really, um, make a difference in, in what kids are subjected to. And then just in the institutions committee, we do the, um, capital bill, the annual capital bill, it's a two-year bill, but the most interesting thing that we're doing this year, based on the number of emails that we're getting, is, uh, in regard to the Salisbury fish hatchery, uh, which the, uh, administration was proposing to close based on its water permit, but its water permit is valid until 2027. So we passed out a bill, a bipartisan bill, just on Friday in our committee, to keep that hatchery open until 2027, to give us some time to find other alternatives, because it's a really important hatchery. That's where all of our trout, um, brood stock come from, so, um, so that's good news. And then just one, uh, bill that I've been working on is with Stormwater Utilities, trying to make it easier for towns to establish stormwater utilities, which on this stormy day, we, um, can see the value of. So thank you very much. Here's an offer.
Hello, Putney, it's, it's good to be here, and, uh, I really wanna express my gratitude for the opportunity to come and speak to the town. The, uh, you know, when I was making my plan to figure out, you know, what towns can I get to and what towns, you know, I can't defy the laws of, uh, time, so not able to get to every single town in Wyndham County, but I really wanted to prioritize Putney so that I could come by and first express my gratitude to Chief Goddard, uh, who is, who is retiring. Uh, you know, back, very quick story I'll share, you know, I, I first met the chief back probably 2011 or 2012, uh, when I was just starting off as a trooper, and, you know, I can say this now, but, you know, when you're brand new and you're responding to something that is utterly chaotic and you're by yourself, uh, when you show up and there's somebody there who knows what they're doing and maintains a level and steadfast, um, pressure... presence, it's very valuable. So I know his public service will be missed, and I wanted to just make sure I expressed my gratitude first and foremost. So again...yeah, actually, yeah. Can we give him a round of applause? That's...thank you. Thank you. So I figured I will just provide a high-level overview of a few of the bills that I've been working on in both of my committees. As was previously mentioned, senators serve on two committees. In the morning, I serve as the vice chair of the Judiciary Committee, and in the afternoon, I serve as a member of the Education Committee. And outside of these standing committees, I also serve on the Judicial Nominating Board, which is the entity that performs the hiring process for judges and other judicial and quasi-judicial positions before the names are sent to the governor. So my priorities in the Judiciary Committee have been primarily focused on improving the efficiency of different procedures in different court hearings, while also addressing capacity issues with staffing. And I've also worked on a number of bills that focus on protecting victims of violent crimes. Specifically, some of those bills include removing the requirement that victims of violent felonies, such as aggravated domestic assault, testify in front of the person who assaulted them in pre-trial hold without bail hearings. This is a bill that both protects victims and also improves public safety. I've also worked on and passed a bill that removes the requirement for children who are victims of cruelty to a child to testify in front of their abuser. Under current law, we do not require child victims of sexual assault to testify, and this protection, if signed into law, will extend to young victims of physical abuse as well. And for those curious, the age threshold is 12. And another large topic of conversation regarding the judiciary is the significant backlog in cases, and this is also tied to public safety. And one more quick story that I'm not going to provide any identifying information, but I will just say that in 2017, there was a case that I investigated. It was a nonviolent felony. That case was resolved two months ago. So for six years, this case was left lingering. And so that's just one example. Oh, and the ironic part, actually, was that I had to leave a hearing in the State House to come down and testify, and that hearing was about the court backlogs. So addressing the backlog involves multiple steps, some of which are technical, others of which involve increasing workload capacity. And at the current rate in which we resolve cases, our state will be out of the backlog within approximately 20 to 30 years. So in order to help address this and to ensure we're upholding Vermonters' rights to a speedy trial, our committee recently passed a bill which creates three new judge positions. One of these positions will also be used to start a statewide drug docket to help address the opioid crisis as well. So moving on to the Education Committee. You know, when it comes to this committee, well, like most things, I try to consider both the long-term and short-term impacts on our kids for all the bills that we work on, and also try to make sure to consider the workload impact on teachers and staff in the schools. And one of the bills for me that's become a top priority involves making improvements to the governance and logistics of career technical education centers, also known as CTEs. These are places where kids can go to learn a trade or a skill that will not only come in handy, but almost guarantee that they'll be able to find employment in one of the many trade-career fields that are lacking personnel. One of the...aside from the governance and funding structure that we're trying to change, and I won't get into the weeds of that, but one of the other changes is to establish partnerships between CTEs and our state colleges. And there's two main reasons for this. Many CTEs are at capacity for their physical space. And for example, we heard testimony from one center that had to turn away 200 students who wanted to go into that school to learn a trade, and it's just because they didn't have the space. And so partnering with colleges will allow access to additional facilities without having to put a burden on either school districts or CTEs to fund new capital projects. And these partnerships will also allow for students to transfer their high school credits to technical colleges, which will then help them more quickly and affordably get more advanced certifications involving their trade. And another less complicated bill I worked on involves supporting refugees and their continuing education. Given our growing refugee population, I felt that this bill was needed for new Americans who want to live and work in our communities. This bill doesn't create any additional...oh, thank you. This bill doesn't create any additional expenses, but rather it changes some of the requirements, the residency requirements that didn't quite make sense for folks who have just come to America. And this will allow folks to access, to more easily access, non-degree educational courses such as English classes or driving classes. We've also worked on a series of other bills related to improving literacy, changing the state school board composition, and creating stronger protections against sexual assault on our college campuses. And so everything that I've described so far is really a small fraction of all the work that we've been doing over the last few months. And I do want to be mindful of time, so I certainly can't get into all of it. But if you are curious about any of the bills that I've described or anything that I haven't described, I'm happy to provide you with more information. We'll also be leaving some town meeting update reports somewhere on an empty table, if there is one. And I just want to close by saying it's...while this is one of the most challenging jobs I've ever had, it's also one of the best jobs I've ever had, and I'm extremely grateful to be up in Montpelier representing Wyndham County. So again, thank you all.
All right. Thank you to Nodder and Wendy. Charlie, do you want to come take this?
Great, good. Are you all right? Give me a hand.
Great. All right. Just a couple of housekeeping before we get started with Article 6. Should we do a division again? We want to make sure that people come inside this area so we know that we're counting Putney voters, as opposed to when people were further out there, it gets a little harder. Okay. I think that's my only update. Oh, and to thank...can we do a quick mic check? Just to make sure, it looks like Steve has solved the problem. Yes, thank you, Steve. Excellent. Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,336,796, of which $1,170,221 shall be raised by taxes and $166,575 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025? So moved. So moved by Peg Alden. Do we have a second? Lucia Torino is the second. If you wear a red hat, I notice you quickly. It has been moved and seconded, and now we are beginning discussion on the following question. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,336,796, of which $1,170,221 shall be raised by taxes and $166,575 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025? Is there somebody who would like to speak on this motion...on this article? Before...and just to remind people, when I'm open to questions from the floor, I'm looking for those...I'm trying to clarify if you're speaking for or against whatever's on the floor, but you are more than willing to ask questions as well. Karen?
Sure. All right. So the highway budget is pretty much level-funded, except for salaries. So I'm going to loop back around to Janice Baldwin's statement earlier. So in Putney, we are not at competitive rates in certain departments, and the highway department is one of them. We're trying to retain and recruit, and right now, the average for our town highway department crew members is anywhere from $21 an hour to $25. So these folks can probably go to another job and make a lot more money than what we're paying them right now. So I'm trying to get that rate up so we can keep our folks. The other thing, too, with Brian and Jason now leaving, restructuring that highway department, chances are we're going to be looking at younger folks and folks that have young families. I have...we have two folks right now. One is of retirement age and another one, you know, maybe in four years. So in four years, we're going to be replacing two more people. Right now, we have one available spot once Jason leaves on May 1. With that comes the health insurance. So when I look at a budget and I try to plan for the next fiscal year, if I know we're going to have new employees and they might have a young family, I have in the budget family plans. That's not to say that these folks will take our insurance, but I have to plan for that. So that's the other increase in the highway budget. So basically, salaries and health insurance. And the good news is, we won't be purchasing any vehicles in '25.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian Harlow.
Okay. And for people who are following, pages 33 through 35, and there's notes on 35 of specific elements. Anybody have either questions or things they wish to say against the budget? We've just heard in favor of the budget. Do I see any questions? Any hands? On the highway fund budget? Could it be? Could it be? Yes. Wait...Bert, can you find a mic and give us your full name? Let's see if this mic in the middle of the room works. And is Lexi still here? Lexi is not here anymore. Do we have a mic that a citizen can use, a voter?
I can raise my voice. Mic is on, okay. My question is about the health insurance.
Oh, and that mic is on now. Thank you.
Yes, okay. I find that surprising that the change in the health insurance is that extensive for a few people. So could you elucidate on that a little bit more? How much more are we paying for the health insurance?
And could you say your name, sir, just so that...
Bert Teppfer.
Thank you. Thank you, Bert. So for a family plan, it's roughly $39,000 a year for that insurance plan. I have in the budget four family plans with five employees. Insurance, open enrollment is in the fall. What we also do is we offer an opt-out on medical insurance, and that's like $3,000. So I'm going to get creative in the fall and think about that number, maybe increasing it. If folks have spouses and their insurance might be comparable, they may opt out, and we could ultimately save money. It's such an unknown right now, trying to reorganize a complete department. You know, for the most part, people who have insurance, right now, their significant other or spouse doesn't have insurance, or it's a single plan, so it doesn't impact the insurance overall. It's the family plans that cost more money. But I also have to consider that we might be hiring young people with young families.
Okay. And we have any other questions or to speak against the highway budget? Yes, in the back? And can we get a mic for...a mic...yes, if you could say your name, Heather?
Yep. Well, wait a minute. Good. There we go. It's Heather Small. I just have a question about the medical insurance. Is it high-deductible plans for people who are making a larger salary, $52,000 per dollar a year pre-tax?
So we have an HRA that goes along with that, and that covers the deductible. It's a $3,000 deductible. Every year, we look at, and I say "we," Kim and I, we look at both Blue Cross/Blue Shield, and we currently have MVP. And Blue Cross is a lot more expensive. Maybe someday, it'll flip. If we all had universal insurance, it'd probably be a lot easier. But, you know, this is a...this is a huge expense, you know, and the burden is in the operating expenses. But I'm always looking for other ways to save money, but not at the expense of an employee.
Okay. Any other questions or to speak against? In the back, we have a question?
I'm speaking for the budget. I'm very appreciative of our town manager. My name is Greeno Nowakowski. Thank you. That's the right way to think about it. And when I hear, is it the highway budget? Is it the gar...
Highway.
Highway budget, I'm thinking more than just plowing culverts, road repairs. I'm thinking young people are important, and perhaps even an expanded job description. We need to start thinking about redesigning some of our roadways because they're only going to keep getting washed out every time there's a major rain. So let's not scrimp on the highway budget, and let's think many years down the road, young people coming in with engineering and looking ahead to...I drive on some roads, and when there's two cars, your outside tire is in several spots that have been patched. And those patches are going to go next time we have a big storm. So we have a lot to do with the highways. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? I'm looking for hands in the front here. Sue, if you could give your full name?
Susan Coakley. I just want to say something about this budget and maybe have a question about it. First of all, like Greeno, I have deep appreciation for the budget that's developed and I'm very supportive of it. And there's something very innovative about this budget that I don't know has been pointed out yet, something for the first time ever for Putney. We have a long-term capital plan. We've never had one. And that will save us money because we can identify what expenses we're going to have in the future for the highway, for the sewer, for the town hall, for everything, so we can plan for it and we can get money for it. And we don't find ourselves in an emergency situation where we have to borrow money and pay interest for it. This is really smart. So Karen, I know you developed this capital plan, and I just want to say thank you. I don't know how you had time to sit down and map it out, equipment by equipment line. It's impressive.
I had help.
I'm...you're very good at that, too, Karen. I know. But still, you made it happen.
Thank you.
So my question would be, when I look at the capital plan on page 45, for highway equipment, I see that for FY '25, there are a couple of items highlighted there. They're related to dump trucks. But I wondered, since we don't have any capital expenditures this year, I wonder if we can all learn about the capital plan, if you can help us understand...so now I made you all look at page 44, but what are those? Why do we have that if we don't have any capital expenditures this year? Just help us understand how this works.
Okay. So for fiscal '25, in the highway equipment... in the highway equipment, so those are two finance vehicles. And those two numbers are in the budget under the capital plan or the capital equipment. Hang on a minute. Capital and debt service. So it's accounted for in the budget. And also, it shows that those two vehicles, so by fiscal year '26, that'll be the last debt payment on a borrowed vehicle because we've been buying equipment with cash.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be said on, on that? No?
So the capital planning is a work in progress, and we're going to fine-tune that so we all understand it and it makes sense and it's more balanced. And there's a grant to do that.
Okay. So just a reminder that we're discussing Article VI. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against Article VI? Seeing no hands up, it appears that we are, oh. Okay, I have a hand in the back. Can we get a mic to Howard Fairman?
Madam Moderator, this is not to speak against it but to call everyone's attention on page 35 to this for the highway fund. Overall balanced budget decrease of $317,000 revenue expenses were 19.14%. Now, if I understand correctly, and perhaps our town manager could correct me on this if necessary, this means we're actually going to spend a little bit less on highway than in the previous fiscal year?
So Howard, what that is, that negative $316,000 is grants, okay? So when I look at a budget, I have to account for grant money, too. We had two grants this year, both for like $200,000. One was for structures and one was for paving. And it's offset by the expenses. So the overall amount looks lower, but in reality, it has increased what we need to collect for taxes because of the insurance and the compensation.
Okay. I see no other hands up, so, oh, I do see a hand up.
That's Jim Oliver. I reviewed the fire, the, the report of the group that looked into the fire department. And one of the things that came out of that was that it seemed that there were, a number of the vehicles were pretty out of date. And it's great that the fire department's been able to keep them going. But then I look at the, the capital plan and there's, there's, I don't see in the capital plan any reference to additional vehicles in the future. Now, I think that this, if in fact that money isn't there, it's going to be, it's not in the plan, it is money that's going to probably need to be spent in the relatively near future if we continue with the kind of setup we have now in this part, in the state of multiple fire departments close together. And it seems to me to speak to the need to really consider whether some of services can be regionalized.
So I'm going to take that as a comment for the general public as well of do we want to also be pursuing a regional approach? Anybody on the select board first? Or Karen? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to make, to make a comment for clarity. So Jim, on page 45, so in FY '26, the Western Star number five for $175,000, that's what's planned to replace that truck. And then in FY '27, there's another truck replacement. Oh, sorry. We're in the highway, but I, no, all right. It's okay. I was confused, sorry. I was trying to correct.
I have a hand up. Josh would like to jump in. This is a question, though, for the highway fund. I guess that's my one little question. We're discussing Article VI, what has to do with the highway fund. Josh?
So I just wanted to clarify for Jim that in fact, as Karen just sort of alluded to, highway is separate from fire department as far as the funding is concerned. But also, Jim, as to your question, if you look down partway through the fire department equipment list on that page 45, you will see in FY '26, '27, '28 listed $47,500 towards replacement of a couple engines and $42,500. That's when those kick back in, and those would be subject to borrowing. You can also see that the numbers related to that are huge. We're talking almost million-dollar pieces of equipment. So those will be expensive purchases when they come.
Okay, just a reminder that we're discussing Article VI about the highway fund, and we have a hand in the back. Howard?
Madam Moderator, regarding fire engines, it bears mentioning. At 2020 Putney Town Meeting, our Town of Putney Select Board proposed, and Town of Putney voters approved, wanting to buy a new fire engine, timely and expertly recommended by our Town of Putney Fire Department. Afterward, our select board refused to buy this fire engine that they had proposed and voters had approved, overruling voters, disregarding firefighters, and ignoring since then a need that is forgotten but not gone. The pandemic was new, but the impact on the tax rate was small, and the need for a new fire engine was and is not our select board's priority. Thank you.
Okay. So just a reminder that we're discussing Article VI. I have hands over here in the back. Jeanette White? Jeanette, I'm afraid you'll need a mic because people can't actually hear you.
That's probably a good thing, that they can't hear me. I was just, I was going to remind us that we're talking about the highway fund. The highway fund is different than the fire department fund. And if we want to talk about the fire department, it should be under a different topic. This is highway fund. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody who wishes to weigh in on the question of Article VI on the highway fund? Yes, Lawrence?
Good afternoon, Lawrence O'Neil. Karen, I was curious. You talked about retention and salaries and the benefits for our highway department people. The benefits you're, we're offering sound like they're expensive and they're comprehensive. Are we, is our compensation package lower than others because we're offering better benefits? Is that, is that a draw to people here? We're, we're bringing people that have a family so they can get a family thing, but maybe get a less, a smaller hourly wage than they would someplace else?
All I can say right now, Lawrence, is, whoa. With the salary increases, the competitive increases, with our benefits, it makes for a very strong competitive package. I've always felt, and this is my opinion, only my opinion, that the Town of Putney does provide really good benefits. And honestly, when we do performance evaluations, I remind people that this might be your hourly, but you know, when you look at your benefits package, you're up here. So we're competitive. So when I'm looking for that other guy, I'll be looking at other towns. Shh.
Okay. I see no other hands up, which leads me to believe we may be ready to go to a vote. We are voting, just to remind everybody, shall the voters of the Town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,336,796, of which $1,170,221 shall be raised by taxes and $166,575 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article VI passes. We will now move to Article VII. Shall the voters of the Town of Putney appropriate the sum of $633 to be raised by taxes for the support of Green Mountain Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, GM R S V P, to provide services of residents of the town to promote healthy aging and combat social isolation and food insecurity? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Eric, can I get a second from the floor? Greeno Nowakowski is the second. We are now discussing Article VII, and I'd like to invite a non-Putney resident. So let me read it over one more, and then I'm going to ask you if it's all right, if a non-Putney resident speaks to this article. Shall the voters of the Town of Putney appropriate, oop, appropriate the sum of $633 to be raised by taxes for the support of Green Mountain Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, GM R S V P, to provide services of residents of the town to promote healthy aging and combat social isolation and food insecurity? Hearing no objections, I would like to invite Cory Mitchell to speak on this article. And then I will open it up to the floor for questions and dissent. Oh, gracious. What is going on here?
It's taller than I am.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the invitation to speak. This is the first time we've, we've done this. Putney has supported this project for many, many years at this same level funded amount. But this is our first opportunity to go through the petition process and address the town. And I'm not a Putney voter, you heard, and not a resident of your beautiful place. And after just hearing your discussions this morning, I think I want to live here. This is a, this is a great process, and I'm grateful for being able to experience this with you today. We are a volunteer organization that engages people 55 and over in volunteer positions in nonprofits that address food insecurity, healthy aging, and loneliness for our homebound seniors. And even though at this point, there is no hub of R S V P in Putney, we have R S V P volunteers who live here. And Putney is served by R S V P volunteers in nonprofits in surrounding towns that do things like deliver meals on wheels. They facilitate the bone builder classes that Putney residents attend a little further north and a little further south. And we'd love to have a class here if we can get that going now. COVID slowed that down a little bit because it's an in-person exercise class. They also provide transportation and companionship services to people in your community. So again, I'd like to thank you for your support so far and hope that you can support us again this year. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes. It's like an electrical storm up here. Okay, we have a, could we get a mic to Josh?
Can somebody clarify why this is coming up as an individual petitioned article as opposed to falling under the social services agency's budget? And whether it will remain as an individual article going forward or whether it would be in the social services in the future?
Is there a select board member who can answer that?
Can you hear me? We revised our social services policy, and that was one we all agreed to take off the list. Actually, we took all of them. We took all of them off the list. We're just going to start over.
Any other questions or... Is there somebody before Josh? Because Josh has already raised a question on this.
Just a point of clarification on that.
Sure.
So does that mean that, and maybe we don't know yet if you haven't fully reformed the social services, does that mean it would fall into the social services agency budget going forward? Or is everybody going to have to petition over time?
It would not. It'd have to petition every year.
Can, he just said that it will need to petition every year. It sounds like maybe if, how is your mic? Do you want to just try it one more time? Try saying that into the mic, Eric.
The agency, or the, yeah. The Green Mountain R S V P would have to petition every year.
Any other questions? I have a hand in the back. Jim Oliver?
So what shows up on page 47 is for this coming year, but only this coming year. And does that mean that next year, all of these will have to go through town meeting by petition? Or is there another process for them to?
Yeah. Eileen, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So last year, I don't know if you recall, but this select board sat up here before you and promised that we were going to revamp that policy. So that's what we did this year. We revamped it. We, we redefined it a little bit. And one of the major things that we did was eliminate Group C. So the appropriations that are found on page 47 are the ones that are in the policy. And the one that is before you right now was one of the ones that was previously in Group C. But there is no Group C now, and we didn't feel that those fit into either one of those groups. So they ended up having to petition.
Any other questions about, yes? And if you could say your name?
Bert Tepper. How does this group differ from or compare with Putney Cares? And it seems like there's some overlap to me in their services. And I just wonder if there's something special about this particular organization compared to the Putney Cares people? Because we're already funding them in category A, I see on our budget.
Does, is there anybody who wishes to answer Bert's question? So the question is, how does Green Mountain R S V P differ from Putney Cares? Is it all right? Wow, I don't know why we're having such a hard time here. May we hear from Cory Mitchell again, non-Putney voter? Yes, and then we're going to go to Ruby, who also had her hand up. Do you want to come up?
Thanks for that question. The difference is that Putney Cares is your local agency, and we would be a resource for them if they needed volunteers to carry out their mission. So, and that's essentially it, yeah.
Great, thank you. And we have Ruby McAdoo has also got her hand up.
Hi. So I'm wearing a hat right now of Putney-
Hi, so I'm wearing a hat right now of Putney Community Cares Coordinator. Putney Community Cares serves the whole community, not just older adults, which R S V P does. We collaborate to some degree with R S V P. They have the Sunshine Card Program that we send out to our Meals on Wheels recipients. We do occasionally talk about programming. There is duplication, but I think, in my opinion, it's not a bad thing to have multiple bone builders classes that people have access to. Some people don't want to come to their town and see their people when they're in a class. It's just a reality. And I think there was a bone builders class potentially at Putney Meadows that could come back. And so I would speak in support of this, whatever this thing's called.
Article 7.
Article 7. And in part because I do think that, I would argue that they do belong in category B, because I do think they serve both, there are Putney residents over 55 who volunteer, but they also do have programs and services and resources that serve our community.
Great. So we just heard a statement in favor of Article 7. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against Article 7 or ask a question? In the back, Grino.
Aye.
Grino Nowakowski, can we call the question? Okay, just so everybody understands, when we call the question, we start a parliamentary process, which is going to take its own time. So do you wish to call the question?
My thinking that this is a very small amount of money for the town to contribute, and we should do it and get it over with and go on to the next thing.
So it sounds like you wish to call the question. That's going to require a second, there is no debate, and it takes a two-thirds majority. Do we have a second? A second from Laura Chapman. No debate, we are now calling the question on Article 7. I won't reread it. All those in favor of calling the question, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. I'm going to say that the ayes have it, the question has been called, we are now moving to a vote, there is no debate. We are now going to vote on shall the voters of the town of Putney appropriate the sum of $633 to be raised by taxes for the support of GM R S V P to provide services of residents of the town to promote healthy aging and combat social isolation and food insecurity? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 7 passes. We will now move to Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Putney appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be raised by taxes for the Bellows Falls Community Bike Project to help defray the operating expenses required to provide low-cost bicycles and bicycle repair to the Greater Falls region? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Eric moves. Do we have a second? We have from the second, can you tell me your name? Melody Fletcher, I forget it within a day. So we have moved and second, Article 8, shall the voters of the town of Putney appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be raised by taxes for the Bellows Falls Community Bike Project to help defray the operating expenses required to provide low-cost bicycles and bicycle repair to the Greater Falls region? Is, we are now opening this for discussion, and it appears there may be somebody who wishes to speak on behalf of Article 8. Is that correct? Daniel, is it possible, just because for the mic, are you able to jump over the, we'll watch? And then, great, and then you could speak from down there. Because, Daniel, you are a Putney voter, right? Oh, I'm sorry, may, hearing no objections. I'm sorry, Daniel Horvus. Hearing no objections, would the voters of Putney allow Daniel to speak on Article 8? Yes, okay, thank you, sorry.
Hi, everyone, thanks for letting me speak. I am the shop manager at the Bellows Falls Community Bike Project, and we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). We're celebrating our 10th anniversary this past year, so this will be year 11. We provide low-cost and no-cost bike repairs for many residents of many towns, including Putney, Brattleboro, Springfield, Westminster, and so on. The reason we're asking for funding is because we have operating costs for parts and materials and labor that in some cases outstrips the cost that we make back selling bikes. So in essence, we probably lose money on almost every bike we sell, but we try to make bikes affordable, we don't turn anyone away. If someone comes to me on a Tuesday and says, I don't get paid till Thursday, can you repair my bike? I always say yes, because that's the way our operation is. So all of the children in the neighborhood get free repairs. We encourage volunteers to come and learn to take bikes apart and clean them and put them back together. We have a new young man who's just learning bike repair, he's been with us for about four months now, and we try to create an atmosphere where bikes and biking is encouraged. So thank you for your time.
Great.
And I have numbers and figures in my pocket if you have questions.
Okay. Does anybody have a question? You've heard an argument in favor of Article 8. Any questions? Yes, Ruby McAdoo.
Are any other towns being asked for contributions?
Well, we've had level funding from the town of Bellows Falls, we've reached out to Brattleboro and have yet to hear back from them. We were going to do a petition in Westminster and just ran out of time. So it is our intent to ask all the towns around because we do service everyone.
Does anybody wish to ask a question or speak against? Jim Oliver in the back.
This is a question about the process. If, there already has been a vote to extend funding to a group that is not in those that are listed on page 47. Is the effect of that to reduce, well, let me start back a little further. The total amount that's available for social service appropriations is set at 2.5% of the budget. So that's a fixed dollar amount, I take it. And it's divided up between these 10 different organizations on the basis of Group A and Group B difference, but each, within each group, they get the same amount of money. So it seems like we're, the process, I'm unclear on the process, I'm sorry to be stumbling, because I don't understand what will happen next year. Will all of these 10 organizations be grandfathered, and they'll be the only ones, and the way to get into this group is to petition? And if a petition is accepted, does that then reduce, and the group is put into Group A or Group B, then is that set amount of money split more ways, or what's the anticipated process?
Is there somebody on the select board who's able to answer that question? Looks like Peg has raised her hand.
These petitions won't necessarily bump them into the Group A or Group B. They will need to come back and petition every year unless the select board adds them to those two categories. And yes, you're right, if we were to add more groups, more organizations, as we do add more, it takes away from the other organizations that are already there.
Any other questions? Anybody want to speak against? Daniel? If you could say your full name.
Daniel Hardigan. I love the bike project, I'd be happy to donate money out of my pocket for it, I think they do awesome work. However, I don't want to go through the town this way and have it increase the taxes for everybody. Be happy to pass a hat and put money in it, but going through this process to me seems like kind of a government overreach. However, if we decide as the people who want to do this, I'll go with that. But I think, again, I want to rein in the spending, and let's stick to highways and firefighters and all the other stuff. Come knock on my door and ask me for 20 bucks, I'll give it to you, that'd be great, you know. I love the bike project, I don't want to speak, you know, negatively about the bike project, I just, I don't like this method.
Great, thank you. Would somebody like to, are you in favor? In the back.
I just want to-
Aiden, if you could just say your full name.
Aiden Parides.
Thank you.
I think that there is a, either a misunderstanding or disagreement between the last two speakers because I believe the select board member said that the amount of money given to these semi-discretionary things is fixed, and then we're only deciding what fraction is going to go to how many things, and that there's no tax increase associated with this. Yeah.
So you're asking a question for some clarification?
Yeah, see if we can get some agreement between the last two speakers, it sounds like they're working with different facts or presumptions.
Okay. It looks like Peg Alden may answer.
Okay, this has been complicated, let me try to explain it. That these organizations who are coming to us for, they're selecting a dollar amount that they're petitioning, and we are voting on that independent of the community service appropriations. The reason they're coming to us and petitioning independently is because they were not put into category A or category B, and the only way they have to get funding from us is to come and to petition you as, petition all of us as voters, to fund them independent of that social service appropriations amount. Does that make sense?
Follow-up?
I've got other people waiting unless it's very quick and pertinent to what you just said.
Yeah, so just to clarify, it sounds like you're saying that this would incur some additional taxation.
Yes, it would.
Great, thank you for that clarification. We have more questions in the back. I can't see the person's face. Swift. Thank you.
I think this is a question for-
And could you just state your full name for the purpose?
Swift Everdy.
Thank you.
I think this is a question for the organization. Was it unclear or convoluted or confusing, or was, maybe this is a side question for select board, was it an option for them to, a petition to be included in Group B instead of asking for $2,000? So it was an op, I'm seeing, shaking heads, that it was an option to, instead of petition for $2,000, petition to be included in Group B? And maybe you can answer for the organization, that, what was that choice to choose to petition for $2,000 instead of petitioning for Group B?
I'm going to ask the select board first, sorry, and then I'll ask permission for a non-Putney voter to speak. Yes?
Yeah, so in this case, the bike project did come before the select board to be added to the appropriations policy, and we denied it based on the fact that we did not think it fit into Group B. And they consequently filed a petition to go before everybody else.
Okay. Okay, and that seems to answer the question fully. Thank you, Daniel, for nodding. Do we have any other questions? In the back, Heather, and then I'll move to Ted.
My question is for the-
Could you just state your full name for the minutes?
Heather Small.
Thank you.
My question is for the presenter, is your business registered as a 501(c)(3) or any other nonprofit? And how did this factor into your budget for your nonprofit?
Yeah, so with no objection, Daniel's been called to the mic.
Yes, we are, we are a 501(c)(3), and the, I'm not sure I can answer directly your second part of the question, but the $2,000 request works out to roughly 90 cents per person in Putney as a tax increase. I'm not sure that that helps.
Great, thank you. And can we get the people in the back, Jonathan? Would you just remind them to be quiet? Thank you. We had a hand over here, Ted? I do, it does look like we have a runner. Aiden, are you being the runner now?
I saw him get up, so I-
Yeah. So we do have that option, thank you, Aiden.
Ted Dodd, speaking against. It reminds me of all the appeals I get in my post office box. And I don't think the town meeting is a place to decide which of these appeals we should be handling.
Great, thank you, and thank you for clarifying your opposition. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Kate Dodge?
So this is a comment or question for Daniel again, not a opinion about it, and that is, how many, do you have a sense of how many people in Putney actually utilize this service?
Daniel, are you able to answer that?
I'm sorry, I don't have exact numbers for you, I can tell you that we have quite a few people from all different towns. We put together 17 bikes for the refugees in Brattleboro, we put together bikes for people, we repair bikes for people in Putney. To give you exact numbers, I'm sorry, I can't do that right at this moment.
Okay. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor? I haven't heard that. I heard a question, not in favor. Laura Campbell. Laura Campbell.
Hello, I'm Laura Campbell, and I have a bicycle named Bluebird, and it needs new tires. And I would be just the person to go to Daniel's bike shop, because it's a major expense for me. The other thing is that we're about biking, and this school is about biking, and afternoons spent biking, and I can't believe how far afield they go. Bellows Falls is nothing, Westminster West, and anything can happen anywhere. And there is a personal connection with Daniel to this town, when he arranged for bikes, free bikes, to get you from General Store to the co-op, or, you know, the Aiken Preserve, I don't know if you can take bikes there or not. Instead of that, what I have witnessed now is all our idling signs are faded out and disappeared. There are huge trucks, sometimes town trucks, idling constantly, delivering to the co-op and idling and idling, there is no one in them. During balmy summer days, there are people sitting in their cars with the air conditioning on, idling. So I know I'm tangential, but I'm saying we got to get the idling signs back and more power to bikes. Thank you.
Okay. And that was in favor? Does anybody have any questions or to say something against? And what I'm trying to do when I ask these questions is to read the crowd so that I can start to move towards a vote. At the moment, I see no hands up, which appears that we may be ready to vote. We are now voting on Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Putney appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be raised by taxes for the Bellows Falls Community Bike Project to help defray the operating expenses required to provide low-cost bicycles and bicycle repair to the Greater Falls region? All those in favor of Article 8, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Do you want to try one more time? I had somebody ask for division. Was it a Putney voter? I just had somebody ask for division. Could you tell us your name? Gwen Jones, thank you. This time for division, would you please stand and come into the area so that the select board will be able to count, correct? Did you have something to add, Eileen? What? They're just going to be on- They're just going to be on this side of the chain. You say we have a marked area, okay. All those in favor of Article 8, please indicate by standing. And if we could get a couple of voter, select board counting? If you, if you can't stand, raise your hand. But it's getting harder to see if you're in the back. You may be seated. All those against, please indicate by standing. If we could get a couple counters. Do you have numbers? You may be seated, they're calculating. Okay? And what is the result? Wow, it's 58-54. So it appears that Article 8 has passed. We are now moving on to Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Yellow Barn from municipal taxation on the improvements, appurtenances, and land located at 15 Greenwood School Drive, Lot 070248ON, for a period of two years beginning April 1st, 2024, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 3840? Do we have a second? I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Eileen, do we have a second from the floor? Yes, Nancy Storo. It has been moved and seconded. We are now discussing Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Yellow Barn from municipal taxation on the improvements, appurtenances, and land located at 15 Greenwood School Drive, Lot 070248ON, for a period of two years beginning April 1st, 2024, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 3840? Would somebody like to speak on behalf of the article? Catherine, and can you give us your full name?
See what we're doing here? Excellent. Hello, everyone, I'm Catherine Stefan. I really want to be able to see all of you, so hang on. There we go. Okay, I'm Catherine Stefan, I'm Executive Director of Yellow Barn, also a very proud Putney resident. And I just thought I would use this opportunity to clarify what buildings we're talking about because a lot of people don't even know that they exist. So the, there are three different properties that Yellow Barn uses. And the one that most people don't know about is up at the Greenwood School, which is our summer campus. In 2008, when Yellow Barn fought to return to Putney, which we're very, very happy that we were able to do, when we moved here, we built eight buildings on the Greenwood School campus. At that time, the footprints of those buildings, as I understand it, were separated out from the Greenwood School property and attributed to Yellow Barn. The value, I believe, is about $40,000 and it was taken off the tax roll at that time and has stayed off the tax roll since then until we're talking today. There are two other properties, just so that people have the information. One of them is the original Yellow Barn, David and Janet Wells' residence, which Yellow Barn is now responsible for and we've been renovating. And that is a property that Yellow Barn assumes all responsibility for taxes on that property. And then the third property, which we do not own yet, hopefully we will by the time we're talking about this again in a couple of years, we are currently under contract to purchase the property that we use as our summer concert hall. It's in between the library and the co-op, that's the Big Barn property. So we do not yet own that property. I know sometimes there are questions about that. So mostly just wanted to clarify what property we're talking about. With regards to dollars, I don't actually have the dollar amount. Maybe one of our listers can help me on this point. But I think we're talking about $1,000 off the tax roll. But if someone could actually verify that, I'd appreciate it.
So it sounds like we have a question. Is there anybody who can answer the question about the tax roll?
Madam Moderator, if there is a lister in the house, that would be good.
It would appear. Jordi Heller, a lister is in the house.
Jordi Heller, lister. The value is $40,000. The value on the, the practice pods is $40,000. We are in a townwide reappraisal, so we have no idea what it will be for the next tax year. Current tax rate, Karen? At the current tax rate, 40,000, tax on $40,000 and we would be municipal and school that were foregoing on that. It's roughly $2,500 per hundred thousand, so 40% of that.
Looks like there's some math. Is there a mathematician in the house? What do we have? $1,000?
Roughly $1,000 is what we're putting here.
Okay, so are we okay with that amount that was offered? That it's basically $1,000? We're just waiting to verify this? Perhaps while we're waiting for the math to be resolved, are there any other questions or statements that wish to be asked? I'm going to start to the left and then go right. So Lawrence, can we get a mic to Lawrence?
My question is to the lady from Yellow Barn, has, Lawrence O'Neill, sorry. Has the property been tax exempt all along and it's just, we're simply renewing it? Or is this something new?
Go ahead, Catherine.
So it has been exempt since 2008 and it's just up for renewal this year.
Do we have another question?
Two years this time.
Sorry, we have to have people recognized and they also have to have a mic. Any other questions? Eileen has a statement.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that, that, two things about this article. One is that there are town-voted exemptions and this is one of them. Typically, they go for five years, but we don't have them all in the same year. And so the reason why we decided to do it for two years rather than normal, the normal five is to catch it up with the next one, which I don't remember what the, that one is off the top of my head. The other piece to this is that this is just for municipal taxation, not the school taxes. And we did that because every time we do a town-voted exemption with both municipal and the school taxes, it adds to our local agreement. So we were trying to keep the tax rate down.
Okay. Any other questions or arguments against Article 9? Yes, we have. Great, up front.
Hi, Kira Sawyer-Hardigan. I just, I don't know much about it. I don't know why we should say yes. Can you let us know that? Just, I need more information.
Okay, Catherine, you can take that.
Very happy that someone asked, thank you. So for those who don't know Yellow Barn very well, Yellow Barn has existed in Putney for over 50 years. We are a international chamber music festival and year-round arts organization. Yes, sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, but- Sure.
And let's just repeat the question because I want to make sure. So why specifically, and it's important, I thank you for the question. We're talking about Article 9, which is a very specific piece of property. So why that particular piece of property?
So I can't speak to why it was originally, why the exemption was originally put in place in 2008, but I would like to guess that it's because those properties, those particular buildings are essential to the Yellow Barn Festival. They are rehearsal and practice studios. Without them, we would not be able to be in Putney because we wouldn't have the facility that we need during the summer. So it is the only property that we technically, at that time, that we were able to apply for exemption. And as I understand it, at that time, it was an endorsement of having Yellow Barn in Putney. So it's, that remains true to this day. We still need them in the way that we did then.
Any other questions or, whoa. We seem to be having such difficulties this year. 2020 year, the year of static. Any other questions? Does somebody wish to speak? We've had questions, we haven't had anybody speak against this. I'm looking to see if there's any hands. Otherwise, a person might think we are ready for a vote. It appears that we are now going to vote on Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Yellow Barn from municipal taxation on the improvements, appurtenances, and land located at 15 Greenwood School Drive, Lot 070248, for a period of two years beginning April 1st, 2024, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 3840? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it and Article 9 is passed. We will now move to Article 10. Shall the voters authorize the select board to levy a 1% tax on sales, meals, alcoholic beverages, and rooms pursuant to 24 VSA Section 138B, starting July 1st, 2024, for the purpose of supporting the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Eileen, do we have a second from the floor? Melanie Fletcher? Yes, we have a second, Melanie Fletcher, sorry. It has been moved and seconded and we are now considering Article 10. Shall the voters authorize the select board to levy a 1% tax on sales, meals, alcoholic beverages, and rooms pursuant to 24 VSA Section 138B, starting July 1st, 2024, for the purpose of supporting the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund? Would anyone like to speak to Article 10? And I have a hand in the back. Lawrence?
Thank you, Lawrence O'Neill. Perhaps one member of the select board can address this. What do we expect to realize from this tax? And how does that impact the Capital Reserve Fund?
Is there somebody willing to speak to this?
Hi. So Karen's giving me a figure of $12,818 with a but. What's the but?
So the but is, with the 1%, a lot of the third-party platforms do not have to register with the state of Vermont. So if we impose this 1%, they will have to register with the state of Vermont. That would include all of your Airbnbs, any third-party, you know, if anything's being shipped into Putney. So any type of third-party platform.
Okay, we have a question in the back. Karen, you want to add?
Yeah, can I just add to that?
Yeah.
So once that happens too, this $12,000, it could become a lot bigger. We just don't know that yet. And trying to be creative to generate revenue, this is an option.
We have a hand in the back. Can we give it to Kate Dodge?
Hello, Kate Dodge. So full disclosure, I own a business in Putney, Putney Mountain Winery, and we do have mostly out-of-state or out-of-town customers. I don't think it would affect that at all, our sales, because nobody will notice. But I did want to point out that at least a good part of this will apply to local residents because every time you say eat at the diner or buy a sandwich at the General Store or the co-op, that will be taxed at a higher percent. So this is not necessarily bringing in out-of-town, all of it won't be out-of-town sales.
Great. Is there somebody else who would like to speak to Article 10? You haven't spoken yet. Gail? Gail Haines? We'll give you the mic and then you can pronounce everything right.
Right, Gail Haines, H-A-I-N-E-S. So I'm glad you answered the question about Airbnbs because that was my immediate question because it seems important to not just penalize like a motel versus all the others to have it be for everybody. And do you know if there, you said everybody would have to apply to function within Vermont because nobody else in the state has something like this?
Is there somebody who can speak to Gail's question?
So basically, they have to register with the state of Vermont. So I can say there's roughly 62 Airbnbs here in Putney.
But have any of those people had to register in Vermont already because another municipality in Vermont has a tax like this? A 1% on this kind of stuff? So they would have already had to register in Vermont?
Not necessarily. Other towns are doing this, yes.
Well, it looks like we have a hand up here. Howard Fairman?
I think it bears mentioning, or I should clarify something that has been discussed here by our town manager and by the previous speaker about, about Airbnbs, for example, having somehow to register because we have added a 1% tax to the rooms and meals tax. Precisely, they are required to, to collect the rooms and meals tax and remit it to the state of Vermont. So I'm wondering what additional registration would they in fact require?
Can anybody answer Howard's question?
We don't have a good answer for that question, but I think the, I think in general, there's a lot of businesses that are flying under the radar and that this may incentivize them to register with a state because I believe they are supposed to.
Okay. We have other hand up front?
I think they've got an answer for the previous question.
Okay, do you have an answer, perhaps? Okay, do you have an answer, perhaps? Great. Kate Dodge may be able to answer this.
So I do believe, and maybe someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Airbnb website collects sales tax.
Correct.
And pays it to Vermont.
Absolutely.
Great, great. And Sue Coakley's, and then...
This is a very good discussion. I've looked at this question and Kate, I did see that the State Department of Revenue has required Airbnb to collect the revenues on behalf of towns because they're a large platform. But as Karen was referencing, there's Airbnbs that aren't part of Airbnb, meaning there's people operating outside of that network. So those are the ones, to Gail's question, that might not be registered because they're just in Putney and they're not part of a larger platform like Airbnb. So there's a bunch that aren't captured. And I would also say to Howard's question, that this will help us, help the town, which is wanting to develop a list of short-term rentals. So we understand that as a housing option in Putney and what that means for our housing availability. So having a sales tax and having it registered with the state, and you know, it sort of relieves Putney of a certain amount of data collection and so forth. So it's nice to work with a state framework to help us understand what that is. So it's a step in that direction. It won't provide all the information we need about short-term rentals, but it would be a help.
So are you speaking in favor of Article 10?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Michael Wells. I'm all for taxing Airbnbs. I think we should do that as much as we can. Whether we can get more coming to the town, I don't know. But I'm really concerned about the merchants in town, the retail people in town. It's hard enough to have a small business without, without making them harder by another tax, even if it's only 1%. It matters. Especially if you have a small business, it's, you're not making a million dollars here. We're lucky to have some vibrant retail left in Putney, and I don't think we should try to hinder what we have.
Great, thank you. So we've just heard argument against Article 10. Benji.
I would be against it too, if you wanted to go.
Could we have somebody speak in favor? Thank you. And then we're going to go to Benji. Somebody wish to speak in favor of Article 10? Let's go with Sally Pennington.
Thank you. And I'm not sure this is in favor. It really is going to depend on the answer to my question. Karen, when you said anything that's shipped here, so how many, Amazon knows many of our addresses, right? So how, so that, if we have a 1% sales tax and somebody buys something for $75 from Amazon, the town collects 1% of that?
Yeah, so that's the third-party platform that somebody's using. And there's many out there, I just don't know how many.
There's so many.
Right.
And how does that, how can the town implement that? How is Amazon going to know they owe the town of Putney? Thousands of dollars a year.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking for somebody, that was a question, not really in favor. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor of Article 10? In favor? And the person right next to Aiden.
I'm Richard Vassell. I build furniture and ship it all over the, I won't do that again. Ship it all over the country and file sales tax every quarter. There's a whole list of towns where if I ship something to, say, Killington, and I think they repealed that at some point, I, I have to pay that extra 1%. So I would collect it, send it to the state, the state sends it to Killington, taking their cut apparently. So there are platforms out there where this would just get added to whatever the heck they use, and it just calculates it. That's, that's the system. So if you buy something from Amazon, you're going to get the tax, it's going to go to Mont Pigger, and it'll come to Putney. For, for my customers, most of my stuff gets shipped out of state. I don't have to, because I'm so small, I don't have to collect all the various state sales taxes. So I just don't charge Vermont sales tax. The customer has to then do what you're supposed to do when you buy something out of state and don't collect it. There's a line on the tax form somewhere that says, so, so that's sort of how the whole system works.
And you are in favor of Article 10?
I'm ambivalent.
Okay, interesting, all right.
It, it, it'll cost me some more because I buy stuff on Amazon and all this, you know, and go to the general store and the co-op and so on. As far as my business goes, it won't make really any difference.
Okay, great. So now I'll look for Benji, somebody who's speaking against.
Benji Craigan, I'm going to, to Mike's point. I think we're focusing on the Airbnbs. Are restaurants, the general store, are we really going to put another speed bump up? You know, I mean, every little bit counts. It's kind of nice just going into town, get something to eat instead of having to go to Brattleboro. I would just, I'm really against this.
Great, thank you. Would somebody like to speak for? For Article 10? We have a gentleman over there whose name I should know.
My name's Lauren Johnson. I really have a question. What I want to know is, some articles have been, that we've been voting on are presented by the Select Board and the Town Hall, and some are from somewhere else. Where did this one originate?
This was an attempt to basically gauge the, the temperature in the room from the, from the Select Board about additional revenue sources that we could potentially collect instead of just relying on our property tax.
Okay. Somebody wish to speak? What was I at? Four? That wasn't four, that was a question. Does somebody like to speak for?
Mic check. I'm not necessarily in favor of the measure, but I do have a point in favor of the measure, which is that by taxing third-party things, this may be one of the least local business targeting ways to do it, even though it also targets them. Because more local things, like a local business tax, like property tax, whatever, put the local economy at a disadvantage compared to buying from shipments or whatever, whereas this sort of raises the disadvantages of all potential sellers to Putney residents somewhat equally.
Great, thank you. Would somebody like to speak against Article 10? I've got lots of hands. Purple hat, please. Sorry for those of you who are waiting.
Hi.
Could you say your name?
I'm Sally Fletcher. I'm from Putney, Vermont. Hello, everyone. My, I guess I have a point against and kind of a question about this. It seems a little disingenuous to raise the idea of this tax as something that would help with like the housing crisis in Putney and in all of Vermont, like saying that we're specifically asking about Airbnbs and having them contribute a little bit more to the local economy when overall, this would be raising the cost of living for people who do live here. So I'm just kind of curious why, I don't know. That's kind of my against it. It just seems like it's a little strange to bring it up that way. And I'm saying that as somebody who takes a lot of issue with Airbnbs and short-term rentals and can't afford to live in the town that I grew up in, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that was just against. Is there somebody who wishes to speak for Article 10? Article 410, Jeanette, I don't think you've spoken on this article.
I'm not entirely sure that this is, or I take kind of Richard's position here of being somewhat ambivalent, but I will say that for years and years and years in the legislature, we heard about the ability of towns to generate revenue. And the only way towns can generate revenue is by property taxes. So for about 10 years, only, I think, six or seven towns, and it was a result of Act 60, when we created gold towns and non-gold towns for education, were, they were allowed to, they were allowed to have a 1% local option tax. And it took, it took years in the legislature to extend that ability to every other town in the state. It is only recently, probably the last two or three years, that any town has the ability to do this, other than those that were considered gold towns. So this is just an, an opportunity for towns to raise funds without the property tax. And I agree that it might hurt our, some of our local businesses. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how many of us know when we go buy breakfast at the diner, how much we are currently paying for rooms and meals tax or for our meals tax. I don't know if we know that now, and if 1% was added, would we really know that in addition? So I'm kind of ambivalent. I think it's a good idea whether, and we can have our lunch here and not go to Brattleboro because they already do have a 1% sales tax.
All right, that was for Article 10. Would somebody like to speak against Article 10? Mike has not spoken yet. Mike of the general store in the back with the blue hat.
Use the center mic for the moment. I'm going to try.
Okay. So Mike, if you don't mind coming forward.
All right, so I am Mike Cosco from the general store.
Is it working? Sometimes you have to get like this with it, Mike.
Hello.
Oh yeah, you got it.
All right, so you should probably just hear it from me directly, that it is difficult to... It is difficult to make money. And I think that most people...
Now try it, Mike.
Most people don't realize that the price that you pay is 9% goes to the state, and if we add another percent, it just makes me appear more expensive. And that does, we serve the community first, and we pull as many people as we can into the state. But I think this is just another thing that as a business owner, I would vote strongly against.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there somebody who wishes to speak for Article 10? Who has not spoken? Anyone who wishes to speak for Article 10 who has not spoken? Lawrence, did you not speak on, or, wait, I don't think, Melanie Fletcher? I don't think Melanie Fletcher has spoken on Article 10. Question, yes. Here it comes.
So my question is, since I think we all kind of agree that we're, we're okay with charging more money to people from out of town, but we don't want to raise the cost of living for the folks living in town. Is there no way that we could, does it have to go all together like that with food and meals and hotels? It all has to go together. Can't change that. Can't, you can't do Airbnb-only. I know, but they could add another 1%.
Do you wish to answer that?
We say this a lot, Vermont is a Dillon's rule state. We can't do anything that the legislature doesn't let us do. So if they say that we have to take it, take all of these at once, we can't pick and choose as much as we might like to.
Okay, so we just heard, I think, a strong argument against. Do we have somebody who wishes to argue in favor who has not spoken? That would be Josh.
It's more a point of clarification. Karen, you said income from this potentially would be about $12,800. Is that deducting the cost of implementation and enforcement of this? And how would you propose the mechanism for that? I mean, what's it, what's it going to cost us to do this if we do it?
Well, it's unknown, Josh, because the $12,818 is like a base. So there's potentially more revenue once everybody registers. As far as implementing it, I'm not quite sure. No, it's through the state. So the 1% is, so 70% comes to us and 30% goes to the state from that 1%. So it gets broken down a little bit further, yeah. But it all goes through the state, so it's not much that our office would manage.
Okay. So I have a hand, I have many hands of people who haven't spoken, and at this point, I'm just going to start calling on people.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm not the slightest bit ambivalent about, about this. And the temperature here, at least, from my standpoint, is pretty cool, if that's what you want to know. The, the effect of adding to the sticker shock when somebody buys something, even if it's 1%, has a cumulative effect. And whether you're going out to eat or whether you're shopping for a gift or a box of chocolates or whatever, at some point, you ask yourself, maybe I won't go out to eat tonight because last time it just felt so expensive. And it seems to me, I mean, I, I know that if you look around this area, you'll see at least half a dozen, maybe a dozen restaurants that have closed up in the past few years. Restaurant and sales generally are marginal businesses. And if you think that 1% is not going to be off-putting to customers, I think that's naive. I think it might be in the, in the individual sale that nobody is perhaps going to say, oh, okay, that 1% knocks. But cumulatively, it definitely has a chilling effect. And, you know, Vermont already has a sizable sales tax. And it, it was interesting that you just pointed out that we don't even see 30% of it. So to my mind, if you want to find out how many BnBs there are in the, in the town, there are better ways to do it. And I know Tom was, was very assiduous about tracking down people who had BnBs and had not registered. So I know it can be done. And this is, I think, the wrong way to go about it for a lot more pain and a lot less gain.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I saw a couple new hands coming up, I think right behind. Lucia, red hat.
I took my hat off. Lucia Torino, I am also against, I think, in general, sales tax tends to tax lower-income people more heavily as they have to spend more of their income on just regular expenses. And we're already so close to New Hampshire. And as you said, Brattleboro already has a 1% sales tax. It's one thing that we have over them and people. So I just think we should not implement this.
Great, thank you. So we just heard quite a number of againsts. Is there somebody who wants to go for? I'll give you a spot in the line if you want to speak for. Otherwise, I'm going to begin to think we may be heading towards a vote. Yes, you have your, let's see, in the very back, green hat. You speaking for?
Hi, actually, it's more of a question. Keith Fletcher. If I am, let's say, a crafter in town, which I'm not, I order tools and supplies... If I am, let's say, a crafter in town, which I'm not, I order tools and supplies from out of town, I will be paying 1% on that. And then when I sell stuff to be shipped, I'll be paying another extra sales tax on that. Is that what I'm understanding to be the case?
Somebody answer that question?
So the sales tax is on the person who's purchasing the item. So, so the, when you are purchasing an item, you would be taxed a sales tax. And when you sell an item, you would collect that sales tax on behalf of the state. And I believe then it goes up to the state, and they do their magic.
We have a hand right next to you.
Another question for clarification. If we buy a car, or a truck, in Bellows Falls, do we pay an extra 1% on that?
I'm going to say most likely, but I actually don't know the answer to that one.
Well, based on the language of Article 10? Article 10 language does seem to restrict what this is a tax on.
It's on sales, though.
I see, okay.
So a car is a sale, so.
Now we have somebody who says they can answer in the back.
The, the tax.
Can you just say your name one more time?
This is Richard Basell, again. The tax is based on where the product is shipped to. So when I'm selling a piece of furniture and I'm shipping it to Kentucky, they would not pay the 1% sales tax. If that customer from Kentucky came to my shop to pick up their furniture, they would pay that 1% sales tax. It's, that's a sale in Putney. So buying a car in Bellows Falls, you would not pay that tax. If the car was shipped from Bellows Falls to your house in Putney, then you'd pay the tax.
Okay. So I have another hand up of somebody who hasn't spoken on this issue, I believe. Is that?
A follow-up question? Then how, why would, would items shipped from Amazon, or REI, or any other place shipped to Putney, why would, why would that be paid?
Can we get an answer from the mic, please? Because this is getting confusing. I want to make sure everybody understands.
It's because, it's the, when you buy something from Amazon now, you're charged Vermont's sales tax. If there's a Putney sales tax, you will be charged that as well, because they're shipping it to Putney. Just like they know they're shipping it to Vermont, they will know, their software will know, that there's a 1% tax due.
And it's, it looks like Kate Dodge, do you also want to weigh in on the same question? And then I'm going to move to you, sir.
I just want to, a couple of things. One is, if we, just want to make clear that everyone understands, that if we buy something at Amazon.
Can you put the mic up close?
Oh, if we buy something from Amazon, residents of Putney, we pay the extra tax as well. So this isn't necessarily bringing in out-of-state tax, again, unless out-of-state people are purchasing online from us. Right? No, if they're purchasing online, they pay sales tax.
So somebody's been.
If they're purchasing from Putney, they pay Putney sales tax.
There seems to be some disagreement on this issue. Somebody's been waiting on the left, over there.
But there was one other, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Kate.
One other point, and that was that, oh, gosh. Oh, well, I'll think of it later.
Okay. The gentleman with the stripes, if you could remind us your name.
Robert Stromberg. I kind of look at this 1% as a.
Can you make it a little closer? Thank you.
You're welcome. It isn't just 1%. It's 1% every time we buy something. It's not like the town budget, where it's 1% in a year that we're having to pay. You're paying it every time you want to do something. So it's just, it's just taking money out of your pocket, so you can't do other things. It's, it's unhealthy. And we've got enough taxes coming this way from our state and everything else. It, I, I'm against it.
Great. So it sounds like we've been hearing quite a number of cons against Article 10. Again, I'm looking for somebody who wishes to speak in favor of Article 10. Otherwise, we may be able to move to a vote, who hasn't spoken yet. And I think that may be Swift.
Swift Deverdy. I am inclined to speak in favor of this. And if we vote to be against this, I want us to be prepared that we're going to have to find revenue somewhere else. The select board and the town budget, all that is needing more revenue. So please get ready to volunteer, to be a grant writer, join our committees, get more revenue in here if you're voting against this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, and I think Jim Oliver has not spoken on this. There's a woman in the back afterwards.
It seems to me that there's many questions here, that, that there's not a lot of clarity about. And in that context, and given that it's been years, according to Jeanette, that this has been thought about at various levels, it seems to me prudent, at least, to wait until we have more information and we can answer a number of these questions very clearly. And so you're looking, the select board, for a sense of the group. My personal sense is that this may be a good idea, but we just don't know. And we need to know more before we make a decision.
Great. And in the back, on the far left, is somebody who's been waiting quite a long time? Yes, with a blue mask.
I just want to echo.
And if you could say your name.
Sorry. Sedal Wiltshire, Putney. And I just want to echo what Jim just said, because that's what I was going to say, too.
Great. Thank you. And I think Greeno is the last hand I see. Nope, I got one other.
Hi, my name is Greeno Novakowski. I rent a room in my house on Airbnb. Some of my renters have worked as traveling nurses. Some of them work at the Putney Paper Mill currently. My renter works at CNS. All my renters spend money in Putney, so it's a, there's a net gain. I'm renting a room. I share my bathroom, my kitchen, my living room with my guests. So it's not really, I'm not taking lodging off the market. I support this 1% tax. If I can go out and, instead of putting coffee in a to-go mug, buy a, I don't know how much coffee costs, $5 cup of coffee at the general store, I can pay 5 cents additional, right? I don't think it's too high. I don't think it's too much to ask. I think it's very reasonable. I think it's a smart way for the town government to say, all right, everybody, chip in.
Okay, great. And Howard Fairman has, hand up? Oh, I'm sorry. And then we'll go to Robin, who also hasn't spoken.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm looking at the actual Vermont law here, and I'm not going to read you the legal language. I'll simply paraphrase it. Actually, part of it, I will. Of the taxes collected under this section, 70% of the taxes shall be paid on a quarterly basis to the municipality. In other words, we're actually not talking about a 1% tax here. From Putney's perspective, we are talking about a 0.7% tax. And it says, after reduction for the costs of administration and collection under subsection C, which says, for every, for every return, and this would be a sales and use tax return, they're going to charge a per-return, per-return fee of $5.96, of which we pay 70%, and the state pays 30%. So the actual tax is somewhat lower than 0.7%. I would, however, mention that when people say, oh, people will decide to go somewhere else, you're going out to eat, and your tab is $50. Okay, it's going to cost you 50 cents more. Are you going to stay home?
Okay, all right. And we had one other hand up, and that was Robin. Good deliberation, people. We're getting lots of perspectives.
Hi, Robin Exstrom, Putney. Most of the points, I think, have been very well made by other people, so at the risk of repeating things, I, first of all, thank you to the select board for coming directly to the voters to get a sense of this before making a decision on it. I think, as, as Jim, among other people, pointed out, what you're mainly hearing is a number of questions. And just, again, at the risk of repeating what other people have said, I don't understand if the state is unable to enforce full platform compliance with, with collection of revenue from somebody like Airbnb. How a town of, you know, of, the size of Putney is going to be able to? The other point that I would like to make is that people have talked about the 1% that retailers in town who are struggling would have to pay. And it's not a significant amount. I think a more significant issue is, is the hurdle of collecting and accounting for that money. As I say, there are a lot of questions. I'm confused as to whether this would simply be added to the state tax, and it would be worked out somewhere else. But I do know that from people who, who collect sales and use tax, that the, the complexity of complying with the state rules for it are difficult, time-consuming, from reputation, and also from having been involved in retail many years ago in a family business. I know that if anybody has ever been audited by the IRS, they thought it was an absolute picnic, and a day at the beach, compared to being audited by sales and use tax people. The rules are much more complex and arcane, and, you know, particularly from somebody, as we did, who both manufactured and resold goods, it can be very complex. I just think something like this on the scale of villages is, is too much. Thank you.
Great. All right. So we have a couple of hands up. So I'm going to keep calling on people. In the back, we haven't heard from you, and then we'll go to Ted, and then maybe we may be ready for a vote.
Casey Darrow here. We hear about, you know, 50 cents, $50. There's also businesses in town who have expenses that are $500,000 or more, so think about us, too.
Great. And I saw one other hand, which was Ted Dodd.
Ted Dodd, I called a question.
Okay. We now have moved into the parliamentary move, calling the question, which means I need a second. A second was, who gave the second? Jeanette White gave the second. It has been moved and seconded to call the question. That requires a 2/3 majority, and there is no debate. All those in favor of calling the question on Article 10, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It would appear that the ayes have it. Thank you very much for having both sides of the argument. The ayes have it, and we are now calling the question on Article 10. We are going to vote on, shall the voters authorize the select board to levy a 1% tax on sales, meals, alcoholic beverages, and rooms pursuant to 24 VSA Section 138B, starting July 1, 2024, for the purpose of supporting the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It would appear the nays have it. The nays have it, and Article 10 does not pass. Okay. We need to take a very quick break. For reasons which I will not go into, I recommend that you stand up. And I shall be back in two minutes. Okay. Let us proceed. We are now at Article 11. Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Putney transfer charge of the cemeteries from the Board of Cemetery Commissioners to the select board as authorized by 18 VSA 5381? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Nate Snell. Do we have a second from the floor? Josh Loughlin. It has been moved and seconded. Article 11, shall the voters of the town of Putney transfer charge of the cemeteries from the Board of Cemetery Commissioners to the select board as authorized by 18 VSA 5381? Would somebody like to speak to Article 11? Jonathan?
Thank you, Jonathan.
Good afternoon. I'm Jonathan Johnson. In addition to being town clerk, Greenup Day Coordinator, Fence Viewer, I also happen to be a cemetery commissioner. I am currently the only cemetery commissioner, because no one runs. You know, we've had just amazing service from people like Greg Wilson, Laura Heller, who have served for years and years. But right now, I'm literally the only cemetery commissioner. And there's also kind of an interesting legal issue here, in that all of the land that's owned by the cemeteries is actually owned by the town of Putney. And there's a legal issue as to whether cemetery commissioners have independent authority to sell town land, or whether that needs to go through the select board. And when no one ran, Karen, Ashley and I thought, well, maybe the best thing to do is, one, we'll resolve that legal issue, and give it to the cemetery, give it to the select board. You know, they approve our budgets anyway. They're the ones that sign off on mowing contracts and different things that we do. It just made it good sense to have that authority go to the select board, primarily because no one is interested in serving.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about Article 11? In the back? Do we still have a runner?
No, we need another.
We don't have a runner? Are you willing to come forward? Thank you.
My only question is.
And do you mind repeating your name? I'm sorry.
Traybar Grabmar. Oh, I'm sorry, Robert Stromberg. Well, it was okay to laugh, you know? Why would we sell inland, or sell cemetery land? We've still got people dying. I guess that's a question I have.
Jonathan.
If it's an asset, and you're raising our taxes, I don't know, just a question.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that question.
When I say selling land, I'm talking about selling burial plots. You know, you get a, you get the right to a 10 by 10 square in, in Mount Pleasant, or one of the other cemeteries. I probably should have also added that the town of Putney has five big cemeteries, and then 10 small ones. And they're all in need of repairs. You know, we're blessed to have, like, Mr. King up on.
Joy Road.
On Joy Road. He mows a cemetery for us. Betsy McIsaac, they take care of the cemetery on, on their property, on Aplin Way. And the one on Over Hills was always taken care of by Diana Sidebotham, or the tenant who lived there. You know, so, and Denny Amadon takes care of the one on Dusty Ridge. You know, so we have lots of great volunteers. We have great volunteers who put out flags for veterans before Memorial Day, and then bring them all back in after Pearl Harbor Day. You know, I don't see that that would stop, but there's got to be some ultimate authority in, in how the cemeteries are run. And it seems to me that the, the current cemetery rules are outdated and need to be revised and improved. You know, so there's, there's certainly some work that, that we would need to do in terms of, and, and maybe a, a protocol that the town clerk deals with, you know, a member of the select board, in, in terms of responding to calls from the public. And I'd be happy to do that. And, and it wouldn't overly burden the town clerk's office to have a little bit of responsibility and be the, you know, the go-between between the public and the select board. I could see that still happening, but we would need to adopt the rules to make that smooth.
Does anybody else have any questions about Article 11? Does anybody else have any questions about Article 11? Yes, Eileen.
I just want to say that if there's anybody who would like to step up to be appointed by the Select Board as a cemetery commissioner, say, like, right now, we would be appreciative.
It looks like you have some volunteers. Three? Four? Kate Dodge, are you volunteering? Yes, we have four volunteers. Should we give them a round of applause? Anybody wish to speak on Article 11? New volunteer, Kate Dodge.
So, one of the reasons I volunteered is because a number of years ago, when my mother died, we have a, this is in the West Hill Cemetery, which is small, but maintained by the town. There was a question of the fact that the deed to the family plot didn't coincide with the cemetery map. So there was a question of which one ruled, and I was just like, clearly the deed rules, but I think we need to figure that out, which may mean going through deeds and then redrawing the map, because it's not a real piece of property, but it is deeded. Anyway, thanks for letting me work on that.
Great.
Thank you.
So, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor of Article 11? Laura Campbell.
Now, I'm wondering if we've had volunteers for commissioners. They're under the Select Board, right, as volunteers for the, okay. I want to be a volunteer because I so frequently visit all the cemeteries, even the one on Joy Road, and even the one on the Skittle Road up off Putney Mountain with my dog. And I frequently pull the limbs I can lift away, but I am 76. And I think we need young cemetery commissioners to counteract the young cemetery vandals. So if there were any among the four that are, you know, under 50, that'd be good.
Okay, wow. So I think we're talking about Article 11, and we're also talking about volunteering for the cemetery commission. Yes, in the back.
My name is Martha Meggs. I am a graduate of Landmark College. They're always looking for community projects. When I went up there recently, Josh Escony, who is the head of athletics, is looking for projects for the teams to do because there is a community service requirement for all the athletic teams at Landmark. So you might talk to Landmark about that, because pre-pandemic, under a different, one of the people in Student Affairs, there used to be a large amount of community service that got done. But since the pandemic, Landmark isn't really involved in community suppers or anything, that I've noticed. There's really no students coming out and attending these meetings, even though they're stakeholders, too.
Great, thank you. Somebody else? Excellent. On Article 11, Josh Loughlin.
I'm just wondering whether the Select Board is interested in tabling Article 11 or somehow, or amending it to read differently. If you have commissioners who have stepped up, do we need to be voting to get rid of the cemetery commission, or should we be? How does the Select Board want to proceed?
Well, and I want to, just before we move to the Select Board, because you started to talk about something that would be a parliamentary move.
Right. No, well, that's what I'm questioning is what the, I mean, we could just move the question, and if the Select Board is looking to have the question be turned down, voted down, then it would be interesting to know that that would be the opinion of the Select Board, because otherwise, I mean, I think sort of logically it would make sense to vote to eliminate the cemetery commission if we didn't have one, but if we have one, might make a different kind of sense. So I will make...
Do you want to get an answer first, and then we'll see if we need to consult Robert?
Yeah, so the Select Board, at least, I don't really want to take on the cemeteries if we don't have to. And given the fact that we got, I think it was three volunteers at least, to be appointed, I said right now, we can't do it right now because we haven't warned it. But at a very close new date, next Select Board, not the next Select Board meeting either, but very, very soon, if that's, if you're really going to volunteer, I think we should vote this article down.
So that's different than tabling it? Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So Josh, did you want to pursue that, or you're okay with this? All right. Yes, Ted, can we get the microphone? Or Ted, you may have to come forward. I don't think we have a runner anymore. We've reached the late hour.
Ted Dodd, I understand the cemetery commission is somewhat independent legally, and so wouldn't it make sense to have it be under the supervision of the Select Board, and they would appoint a committee, like any other committee? But legally, it's the responsibility of the Select Board.
Great, all right. So that is an argument in favor of Article 11. Does anybody else wish to weigh in? Are there any questions? It looks like we may be ready for a vote. We shall now vote on Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Putney transfer charge of the cemeteries from the Board of Cemetery Commissioners to the Select Board as authorized by 18 VSA 5381? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay."
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and Article 11 does not pass. We will now move to Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Putney revise the name of the Sidewalk Repair Fund and state the purpose to read, Sidewalk Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of planning, matching grants, and for repairing and maintaining town public sidewalks? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second from the floor? Sue Copley. It has been moved and seconded. Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Putney revise the name of the Sidewalk Repair Fund and state the purpose to read, Sidewalk Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of planning, matching grants, and for repairing and maintaining town public sidewalks? Would somebody like to speak to Article 12?
So, you're on.
All right, it's, it looks like there's a question, there's a hand from the floor. It looks like the Select Board is not quite sure, is that right?
No, we are.
You are, okay. I'm going to give the Select Board a chance to answer.
So I think, I mean, to me, it looks pretty self-explanatory. We'd like to do more than just repair.
Can you go closer to the mic?
We would like to do more than just repair our sidewalks with that fund. It'd be nice to use that money elsewhere in regards to our sidewalks.
Any other questions? Josh, statements?
Just a quick clarification is that we named it the Sidewalk Repair Fund when we created it a number of years ago because we didn't know to name it something else. But the whole intent of it was to have money set aside specifically for the use of improving and/or repairing the sidewalks. So I think this would match that intent.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody wish to speak against Article 12? It appears that we may be ready to vote. All right. We are now going to vote on Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Putney revise the name of the Sidewalk Repair Fund and state the purpose to read, Sidewalk Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of planning, matching grants, and for repairing and maintaining town public sidewalks? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." Good. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 12 passes. We will now move on to Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second from the floor? Elizabeth Christie, I saw first. It has been moved and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? Would somebody like to speak to this article? Article 13. Is there somebody on the Select Board who wishes to speak to this article?
So this is general housekeeping. Yeah.
This is basically general housekeeping. This is just making sure that you all still expect us to collect taxes.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any discussion? Yes. And it's terrible, I've forgotten your name. It's not Robert, is it? It is Robert.
So long walking up here, I forgot what I was going to say. Robert Stromberg. When you say collecting taxes, are you saying all taxes, or are you saying delinquent taxes? What taxes are you actually talking about?
Those would be current property taxes. So as the delinquent tax collector, me, I would, well, I collect those through the treasurer, so we monitor that. But this particular article is for current taxes.
For, that people aren't paying, or people, or you just, just to collect?
Just to collect.
I guess I'm confused why we run so many years, and now all of a sudden we're adding that, this line.
So, other towns have these articles as well, and people come and go, and they may not realize that under state statute, that an article in the warning allows, gives us the authority to collect the taxes. So it's basic, it's just general housekeeping.
Okay.
And education.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you for that question. Yes, Daniel.
So, just point of clarification, if we were to vote "nay" on this, does that mean we don't have to pay our taxes?
No. By state statute, gives us the authority to collect taxes. Again, it's a general housekeeping article.
So, but what happens if we vote "nay"?
Well, if somebody else will collect them, the delinquent tax collector will collect them. It's a good question.
Yeah. Should we vote "nay"?
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for Article 13? For or against?
Keep an eye on him.
Does it look as if we are ready to vote? Appears to be the case. We are now voting on Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay."
Daniel.
It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 13 passes. All right. Article 14. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three installments, with the due dates being the third Friday in the month of August, November, and February, by physical delivery to Town Hall? Delivery to Town Hall postmarked or by online payment on or before that date? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And do we have a second? And it looks like Heather Small. It has been moved and seconded. We are now discussing Article 14. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three installments, with the due dates being the third Friday in the month of August, November, and February, by physical delivery to Town Hall? Delivery to Town Hall postmarked or by online payment on or before that date? Does somebody wish to speak to Article 14?
Eileen.
I'm looking first at the Select Board, and then I'm going to move...
Sorry. It's getting late in the day. So, so this is another housekeeping piece. We do do three installments right now. Some towns do two, some towns do four. If somebody wanted to make an amendment on the floor to change that amount, this is your time. I mean, the amount of installments, not the amount of taxes.
All right. So Ted has got a question. I'm sorry, Ted, you'll have to, maybe you want to sit closer to the mic. I know this has become a circuitous route.
Ted Dodd, if it's postmarked on the day of collection, you don't get it until whenever. How do you handle that situation?
So if it's postmarked by the due date, we accept that payment. If it's late, we look at the postmark, and if it's, you know, dated on the day that it's due, it's still current.
Any other questions? Yes.
My name is Linda Brooks. Excuse me. I just had a question.
Could you say your name one more time, just?
Sorry, Linda Brooks.
Linda Brooks, thank you.
I just had a question. I noticed that this was voted on at last year's town meeting. Is this something that we have to vote on every year? I just don't remember that, you know, being a regular part of town meeting.
So these general housekeeping, if you don't want to see them next year, I don't, we don't have to put them in there. I would recommend doing it every few years, though, because things can change, especially the way the economy is right now. And this particular article, you know, somebody may want for payments, you know, make it easier on folks who are having financial difficulties. But, no, I would recommend that they be in there at least every three weeks, three years.
Okay. Any other questions on Article 14? Yes, Tom Ehrenberg. You may have to take the long road to the mic.
It seems that the online option is new, is that right?
The online payment option has been around for at least five years, five and a half.
Newish.
It's okay, yeah. You're welcome.
Any other questions about Article 14? Do I see any hands up? I don't. It appears then we may be ready to vote. On Article 14. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three... year in three installments, with the due dates being the third Friday in the month of August, November, and February by physical delivery to Town Hall? Delivery to Town Hall postmarked or by online payment on or before that date? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 14 passes. Article 15. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the Select Board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And who said that? Charlie? Great. And do we have a second from the floor? Josh Loughlin. It has been moved and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the Select Board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Would somebody like to speak to this Article 15?
General housekeeping? So our policy states that if anyone is delinquent, one full year, we can go to tax sale with that property. Because of COVID, it's been a two-year span. And again, this article here, I mean, if it was every three years, it would probably be fine. I look at delinquent properties throughout the year. And like right now, after the second installment was, or third installment was due, sorry, in February, I've already accumulated a list. But that's something I'll have a discussion with the Select Board about.
Any questions on Article 15? Anybody wish to speak against Article 15? And you're a Putney voter, right? You just jumped over the fence. Yeah. Can we get somebody the mic to? Can you sprint? It could be fun.
What is the reason behind just conveying or selling? Are we selling at today's market? Are we gaining money for the town? Just a question.
So for tax sale proceedings, we basically are collecting all of the delinquent tax amount that is due to the town. The property owner has one year to come up with that money. And if they don't, and someone bid on the property, that bidder would obtain that property in a year.
Can we get the mic back for clarification?
So just a follow-up in the world of needing housing in Putney, wouldn't it be maybe something that you have a housing authority and create housing for Putney with those properties? I don't know if you're legally allowed to do that or not.
I suppose if the town owned the property, but that might be a discussion when we're going through the Housing Needs Assessment Study.
We have some other questions in the back, Ann, and then we'll go to Jean Giddings.
Yes. Ann Carey, my question is if there is a housing foreclosure and then a sale by the town, does the town just, say the price it sold for was more than the taxes that were owed, does the town just keep the taxes and give the balance to the prior owner?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with Jean Giddings?
Jean Giddings, I think this article is designed not to deal with the tax sale by the delinquent tax collector. That's authorized by the statute. But I think this is when the town itself purchases the property at the tax sale to meet the property tax that they wanted to collect and then owns it and wants to sell it. So this is property owned by the town and not your average tax sale, I think.
Does anybody want to respond to that clarification? Yes. Eileen?
Yeah, it does seem to read that way, doesn't it?
Sorry about that, people. It's the end of the day. I'm like pretty much toast right now.
All right. So we're going to stay focused on Article 15. Are there any questions or if people want to speak against it? Otherwise, I think we may be able to move to a vote. I'm seeing nods. All right. Article 15. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the Select Board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 15 passes. We are now done with the articles that were warned. We may now transact any other town business that may legally come before the annual town meeting. And I have a hand up. Jean.
Hi, my name is Jane Katz Field. I'm a Putney voter, and I would like to introduce a resolution from the floor. Shall the voters of Putney direct our U.S. Congressional delegation to call for an immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza and Israel, for a release of all Israeli hostages and Palestinians imprisoned without charges, and for a conditional halt of arms sales to Israel as per the Leahy laws?
And can you give us a copy of that?
Yes.
All right. Let's see. All of a sudden, I just, because this has not been warned, do we get a motion and a second? I just all of a sudden spaced out. It's not really binding. So I don't know if we need a motion and a second. I'm looking at Fletcher right now. I don't think so either. All right. Do we have any comments on this non-binding resolution? Claire, you had your hand up. Is that correct? To reinforce the notion, we do not need a motion, we do not need a second on non-binding resolution. Great. Thank you, Claire. And anybody else wish to speak on this resolution? Yes? John?
Hi, I'm John Field. You've all followed the news. This tragedy that's happening in the Middle East really affects us all as taxpayers. It's something that does pertain to us. We all read about the three students that were attacked and shot near Burlington a couple of months ago. And just the loss of life on both sides is astronomical. If you use the percentage of Palestinians killed so far, which is over 30,000, if you use the percentage over, the percentage killed over the Gazan population in the United States, if you use that percentage, it would come to 3.5 million Americans who would have been killed if the same percentage is applied. Eighty percent of people in Palestine have been displaced from their homes, 160,000 homes and apartment buildings have been destroyed. So it seems very clear to me that this touches us all. Many of you might have seen that 67 of our Vermont legislators, including all the legislators, Mike, Wendy, and Nader, who spoke today, all signed, along with, I guess it was 67 of Vermont legislators, signed a letter a week ago calling on the Biden administration and Congress to adopt an immediate ceasefire to stop the loss of life and to cut, condition military aid on what's called the Leahy Amendment. It was written and shepherded through many, many years ago by Patrick Leahy. If there are human rights violations, then aid is stopped. And I'm not going to take time, but I have a list of about 10 countries that the United States did enact this Leahy law to conditionally stop military aid too. So this is not unprecedented. So I'm hoping that our community embraces this. Thanks.
Great. Would anybody like to speak against the non-binding resolution? Anybody have any questions about the non-binding resolution? Appears we may be ready to vote. I will read it again. Shall the voters of Putney direct our U.S. Congressional delegation to call for an immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza and Israel, for a release of all Israeli hostages and Palestinians imprisoned without charges, and for a conditional halt of arms sales to Israel as per the Leahy laws? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and the non-binding resolution passes. Is there any other business? Sue.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As we prepare to close the meeting, I just would have a thank you that I wanted to offer to a member of the Planning Commissions whose time ends at about an hour, and that would be Robin Ekstrom. Robin, are you still here? There you are. Robin has been our clerk for three years. He was amazing in supporting the 2023 town plan development, our community meetings. He did an amazing job of listening carefully and collecting, recording that, and that is reflected in the town plan. He's done an amazing job of taking minutes. I would say as a chair, I was so supported by the work that he did above and beyond the minimum requirements. Prior to that, he was kind of a one-man show for the Energy Committee for a while and continued their work. And he continues to do work for the town in terms of our conservation and wetlands and so forth. But particularly, I want to just thank Robin for his amazing service, and it's been wonderful and an honor to have you as part of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
And seeing no other hands up, could I have a motion? Oh, I have a hand up, Claire. She'll need a mic. Can we get a mic to Claire?
I'm not, can you hear me?
You'll need to get a little closer to that mic.
Ooh, I'm very close.
There you go.
I just would like all of us voters sitting here today to raise a vote of thanks to the kitchen crew, not only, not only for today's lunch, but knowing that they prepare lunch for our schoolchildren. It's just so touching to know that our children get so well-fed.
Great. Thank you. Very good. Shout out to the kitchen. All right. Oh, Eileen?
While we're on the thank you train, I wanted to also give a huge shout out to Charlie Robacheck, who is finishing up his term in maybe three minutes. Charlie, both Charlie and I stepped up in 2019, or no, 2020? I think it was 2020, to fill a vacancy on the Select Board. And then we ended up running against each other. And I won that seat. But Charlie persevered and ran again and got onto the Select Board as a two-year position, I believe. And he's been an excellent addition to the board, and we will miss him.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's been a privilege to serve the town. Thank you all.
All right. It looks like we may be ready for a motion to adjourn. Would somebody like to make that? I got lots of hands up. Go ahead. Jean Giddings. So moved. And do we have a second? And that could be Elizabeth Christie. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." The ayes have it. Thank you. The meeting 2024 is adjourned.